Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 24, 2006 meeting of the Glendale City Council being called to order at 6:01 PM. We have a roll call for the City Council.
Council members Manukian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Quintero?
Here.
Eusefian?
Here.
Mayor Weaver?
Here. Flight salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Najarian and the invocation by City Clerk Artis Kasakian. Please stand.
Face the flag, place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we honor Glendale's Blue Ribbon Schools here in our council chambers. Since the Glendale Character and Ethics Project's Word of the Month for the month of October is also cooperation, it is only appropriate that we reflect upon this relationship between citizens of Glendale and the people who help shape our children's futures. Martin Luther King said it best when he wrote that, "We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever affects one directly affects us all indirectly." Let us pray for our teachers and for our administrators and for our staff in the school system who work together to better the lives of our youth. Let us pray for the youth whom they nurture and educate to become the leaders of tomorrow. And let us pray for our community so that may continue to be a place where education and educators may flourish. And most importantly, let us pray for cooperation of this network of mutuality between all citizens and stakeholders of Glendale so that we are able to move beyond visualizing ideal communities and make them an everyday reality. Amen.
Thank you. And we have your report.
The agenda for the October 24, 2006 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, October 19, 2006, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Cross next, please.
At 3 is presentations and appointments, and at 3 is agenda preview for the meeting of October 31, 2006.
Mr. McCall.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, on the redevelopment agency and housing agendas, there are no specific action items. There is in the afternoon, however, at 2:30, a special meeting of the Glendale City Council to review the proposed, the final draft of the downtown specific plan. Council will be considering three items: a resolution certifying the final environmental impact report and associated findings, and considering a urgency ordinance for introduction on the zone changes and urgency ordinance for introduction adopting the proposed downtown specific plan. That meeting could last some time, and as a result, the council agenda for that evening has no specific action items outside of the consent calendar.
Thank you. What is next, please?
At 3B is Senator Jack Scott, State of the State.
Mr. Senator, Mr. Scott, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver, and members of the city council, and all that are gathered here tonight. I reflect back on a wonderful relationship that I've been privileged to have with the city of Glendale. When I was first elected to the Assembly back in 1996, I only had a portion of the city, and then when I became senator, I represented the entirety of the city. And I've always enjoyed the relationship here with the members of the city council and with the citizens. I often visit here. I was here yesterday at an event over at Columbus Elementary School. The governor was here and asked me to appear with him in support of the bond, the education bond. And I was glad to join hands in a bipartisan way to say that I too believe that that's important for the future of the state of California. And I'll mention a little bit more about that as I talk about the session that we just completed. You know, I read in Time Magazine and in some other places that we now are 300 million people in the United States. And 37 million of those people or more live in the state of California, which means that one out of every eight Americans live in this large and wonderful state that we're privileged to live in. We have a very vibrant economy here in California. Our gross domestic product is something like $1.5 trillion. If we were a country, we would be the sixth largest economy in the world. And we are, population-wise, we're growing at the rate of about 2% annually, which is twice the national rate. Now, of course, that does pose a few problems, and certainly, I think the city of Glendale has had those kind of problems in terms of the numbers of people who want to come and live in your city. I still think California is quite the golden state. Sometime you hear people saying, "Oh, businesses are leaving California." Well, actually, that's a myth. The reality is that in the last decade, we've added 2.4 million jobs in California. We've had to address some problems. I remember that residents of Glendale came to me and talked to me about the rising and escalating cost of workers' comp. And so, we did pass a bill back in 2004 to address that problem. And fortunately, with the lowering of the premiums that are scheduled to occur this year, since that time, the premiums of workers' comp have gone down about 58%. So, that's one way in which we can say that the economy, the future of California, has improved. Yes, the prices of gas are a little higher than you and I like for them to be, and energy is still a problem in California. We're exploring alternative energies so that we will become less dependent upon fossil fuels, but we still have a long way to go in that. But this past year was quite an interesting year as far as the legislative session was concerned. I guess the key to this year was more collaboration rather than confrontation. And it's my feeling that that's really what the citizens of the state of California want. They are not so interested in whether or not we are Republicans or Democrats. What they're really interested in is whether or not we're going to address the problems of the state. And one of the ways that we're addressing the problems of the state is some bond measures that will be on the ballot very shortly in November. And despite the size of those bond measures, I want to urge support of those bond measures. I think they're important for the future of the state of California. Transportation, the biggest transportation bond in the history of the state will be on the ballot. We have $19.9 billion that's going to be spent on transportation. Roads, expansion of the roads, mass transit, ways in which we can accommodate the population of California. Frankly, I think all of us who have had to spend too much time commuting would have to say that it's badly needed, our bridges, our roads, and so forth. Schools, once again, I think that's the future of California. In fact, a recent study by the University of California at Berkeley said that for every dollar we invest in higher education, we will eventually get $3 back in increased state taxes. The jobs of tomorrow are jobs that require a great deal of technological expertise, and so I think the expansion of our higher education is absolutely essential. But not just higher education, but of course also the K through 12 public school system is terribly important. The other two bond measures, one has to do with flood control, which perhaps we don't think of as keenly as the people in Northern California do, but the reality is if we had a catastrophic flood in Northern California, it would impact our water supply down here in Southern California. So I think flood control is important as well as the one that has to do with housing. So that would tell you a little bit about what our legislative session was about. We addressed some problems like global warming. We raised the minimum wage, believing strongly that everybody in California ought to benefit from an increased economy. And of course, because of my own background and because of the responsibilities that have been given to me, most of my work had to do with education. I chaired the Education Committee, the Senate Education Committee, and this year, we considered about 450 bills. So that kept me busy. We had, I chaired the Budget Subcommittee, which deals with education, which is about 50% of the state budget. And I initiated a few bills on education, and will briefly mention some of those to you. One bill that got a lot of publicity up and down the state was Senate Bill 1655. I discovered that in some of the large schools, that some of the bargaining agreements simply said that if a teacher wanted to transfer to another school, they had the right to do so even if that school didn't think that teacher was appropriate. I didn't think that was in the best interest of children, and so the bill that I passed, and it was a controversial bill, but I was able to get very strong support in both the Senate and in the Assembly. It passed the Assembly 59 to 12, and the Senate 33 to 1, and the governor signed the bill in a public signing ceremony along with Senate Bill 1209 over at John Muir High School in the city of Pasadena. 1209 had to do with giving bonuses to veteran teachers who would go into our hard-to-staff schools, into our poverty area schools, making it easier also for out-of-state teachers to get licensed. I had a bill that was a community college bill, Senate Bill 361. It changed the community college funding in the sense that it gave a great deal of money to equalization, $159 million. And fortunately, the Glendale Community College was one of those that's going to profit a great deal from that. Ara, with your experience on the community college board, you know that that was one of John Davitt's constant messages, equalization.
Certainly was.
And so, we got it, $159 million in equalization. And there was a press conference touting that bill that we had over at Glendale Community College with the Secretary of Education there. Had another bill that dealt with the nursing shortage, providing slots, additional slots. Unfortunately, we have a serious nursing shortage in California, and this will mean that instead of turning out 7,700 nurses every year from our community college and from Cal State University, we will eventually, in the next two or three years, up that to about 10,000 nurses, which are desperately needed. Well, I didn't simply spend all my time on education. I know Bob Eusefian was interested in a bill, and the rest of you were too, that had to do with liquor stores. We worked on that to say that nuisance liquor stores, and I'm not, this is not intact on liquor stores in general, but there were some liquor stores that were resistant to city councils' pleas to clean up their business because it made some liquor stores a real nuisance to the neighborhood and in some cases, almost a center for crime. So we got a bill through. It wasn't as strong as I first wanted it to be, but we did call to the attention of ABC some of the problems, and they have promised to be much more responsive to the city councils in terms of this. Had some bills that dealt with senior issues, one particularly that I'm proud of. We had a problem with conservators that sometimes took advantage of their position to really almost bilk some of the conservates out of some of their property. And so, the bill that I had passed, Senate Bill 1116, says that if a conservator, first they have to demonstrate that they have sought to keep a conservate, an older citizen normally, in their home. And if in-home services are possible, then that ought to be done. And then if the sale of the home is necessary, that all has to be done in public so that there won't be any shenanigans where maybe a conservator is selling it at a lower price to a friend of his rather than acting in the conservate's best interest. Well, I thought I would just review a few of the things that happened up in Sacramento, but I tried to be active here in the city of Glendale. We were able to be with you at the celebration of the 100th anniversary of Glendale. Three of your women were among those we honored as Women in Business Honorees. We had a financial literacy workshop at the Central Library here. I have with me tonight Susie Jacobs, who has been my representative in Glendale, and she often tells me about events that are going on here. And so, whether it's Parks and Recreation, or Community Development Housing, or the Commission on the Status of Women, or many things that involve the Glendale Unified School District, she has been there, or in some cases, I've been there. In fact, I'm scheduled to speak to the Chamber of Commerce in the morning here in Glendale. And I've tried to be present in the city of Glendale whenever possible. But I just wanted to come before you, tell you a little bit about what I might call a broad picture of what's been happening at the state level. Maybe we haven't solved all the problems, but I think we've made some progress. And one of the things that I try to do is not only come before you and tell you a little bit of some of the things I know, but to listen to you also as to ideas you may have about legislation that I might carry for you, or maybe some concerns that you have. So let me stop with that and say that's the broad picture of the state, but maybe some of you would like to make a comment or ask me some questions, and I'm glad to do that.
Manukian.
Senator Scott, I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you for the work that you've done up in Sacramento, representing the city. And I know Susie Jacobs, I see her all over. She's very active in the community, and I want to thank her for her work and your work as well. You've always been there in terms of some of the issues that we're concerned with in the city. I have one more issue, but I'll talk to you about it.
Good.
And to Susie in private, maybe you can carry your legislation on that issue that concerns me, but not my colleagues. So I don't know how you'll address it, but...
Well, I'd be glad to listen to you, as I have before, Councilmember Manukian.
Yes.
We've certainly had a lot of contact.
And thank you for participating in the 100th anniversary of the city of Glendale. That was a wonderful event. It was good to see everyone there.
It was a great event, and you have a lot to be proud of in the 100-year history. Who would have imagined a city of over 200,000 people maybe 100 years ago?
Yes.
But it's been a city of great financial strength and diversity, and more and more people are attracted to your city. And of course, that always brings with it some of the problems of growth, bring issues, but I think that's something that says something about the vitality of the city. And I've always enjoyed working with Jim Starbird. He and I have had a lot of contacts with one another, and I've appreciated the staff of the city as well as the council members.
Thank you.
What comments? Eusefian.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Senator, for coming in here. It's always a pleasure to see you, whether we are in an event or you're here giving your annual reports generally to the public, and it's very refreshing. I must say, you're truly a strong believer of working for the people. You're one of the few that put their, you know, partisanship and check it at the door when you walk into the chambers and deal with issues. We should maybe clone that part of your gene and distribute it to the rest of the people in some of those places. I think that's very important because it's irrelevant whether you're Republican or Democrat or independent. Bottom line is what you do, which is good for the people of California. One question that I wanted to ask, because I think you worked very hard with some of your colleagues in the state, and that is, in the last few years, the state has had some challenges with their financial difficulties. But I think all of you have worked very diligently to try to deal with some of those things. Could you tell us where we are today compared to three years ago?
Well, our situation has improved. We still have a structural deficit, though. We were able to, we had a windfall this year, frankly. We had about $7.5 billion in revenues that we really didn't expect. Well, at least, we didn't expect it back when the budget was first drawn up, back in January of 2006. And the state was in better shape than we imagined. We are trying to make sure that some of that we put aside and also some that it goes to one-time expenditures, because you get in real trouble. I found that out as a college president, that whenever we got a bonanza, for instance, at Pasadena City College that we didn't expect, I would always warn them, "Well, let's spend that on equipment, or let's spend that on capital. Let's don't put it into the regular budget because there's no sign that that's going to be there next year." So we're going to have to work on that and continue to tighten our belt. I think the, I don't anticipate quite as good a year in 2007, '08, as we had in 2006, '07. The revenues were good, but I think a lot of times, if you get too enthusiastic, particularly and you put the money into ongoing expenses, you're going to get yourself in real trouble. So should we perhaps look at other ways to tighten our belt and or make sure we close loopholes as far as the revenues are concerned? I think we should.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian.
It's certainly a pleasure to have the distinguished gentleman before us, Senator Scott. You certainly bring a sense of decorum to the council that some days is lacking. I don't know whose fault that is. But I do want to, again, congratulate you on your efforts for the equalization.
Yeah.
Clearly, as you can see, maybe you know that today, we have before us our school district and many members and principals. To honor them for their achievements, and we are very proud of our educational system from the grade school up through the community college. And the equalization was a great effort and a great success for you. We had pinned our hopes on you for many years at the college that you, if anyone, could cure this great injustice in the funding of our community college students. And lo and behold, you went and did it. So there are very appreciative people up at the college and throughout the state of California for your efforts in equalizing those student reimbursement fees. So congratulations, and you are certainly making Glendale a much better place to live with your efforts.
Well, thank you. I also, we got some money for equalization for K through 12, but it still needs more money as far as equalization is concerned. And I will say this about the equalization we achieved for the community colleges. They came to me and said, "We want you to be the author of the financing bill," and I agreed to. But you know, an interesting thing, I said to the community colleges, "You first have to sit down and agree with yourself." And I said, "When you come to me with a package that has consensus," maybe not total unanimity, but pretty vast majority of the community colleges says, "This is where we want to go." And I was smart enough to say, anytime somebody would come and try to negotiate directly with me, I said, "You go back and you talk to all the other community colleges, and when the community colleges put the package together that they agree on, then I think we're going to get somewhere." And I was fortunate also to work with the governor's office. And so, by the time we got 361 into the final stages in the Assembly, we had a buy-off on the governor's office. We knew that the governor is going to sign this bill, and that was, you know, when you, it's kind of interesting when you can get everybody to kind of buy in together. And so, I was glad to be the lead person, but I'll be very honest and say, it was really the community colleges themselves who got together and said, "This is what we think is a fair package for financing the community colleges." And so, finally, when we got it voted out, you can imagine how many calls the governor's office got to say, "Sign that bill." And it worked well.
Well, I just want to congratulate you for your usual good job of representing the district. Thank you for that. And then congratulate you. I read about the 62-mile bicycle ride for charity that you, I was very impressed. That's through the California coast, I think, all the way down to Cambria, through Big Sur. So that was quite an effort. You're a healthy, healthy person, that's for sure, Senator.
Well, I was a little less energetic then than I am tonight, but I had a good time. It was a wonderful ride. It was sponsored mainly by Maria Shriver and the Best Buddies. It's raising money for the developmentally disabled children. And it was a fun event, and I, you know, every once in a while, some very young guy would pass me and say, "Good going." And I thought, "I think he looked back here and saw this gray hair and thought, 'What's this guy doing out here on the bicycle?'" But it was a good time. I had a great time. For those of you who didn't know about it, I participated in this bike ride that started in Big Sur. It was about a week and a half ago on a Saturday. Started in Big Sur and ended up at the Hearst Castle. So it was quite an event, and I haven't done that in quite a while, so I kind of had to get ready for it, but can't do that every day, but it was fun that day.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you very much for coming, as you do every year.
Okay.
It's a pleasure to have you here, and congratulations on all the good you've done up there. I guess you've got just about more bills passed without antagonism up there than just about any state senator we have, right?
Well, I do, so far, I've been lucky. I have a pretty good record, and thank you, Dave.
It's not luck. It's you.
Well, thank you. And thanks to the city of Glendale. I think I've got the best district in the state, to tell you the truth, because I love these cities that I get to represent, and certainly, Glendale is one that I have a lot of pride in. Thank you a lot.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, what is next, please?
At 3C is a presentation of Blue Ribbon and distinguished schools' recognition.
Okay, I'm just kind of curious. How many are here for this item? Show of hands. Hi, Thoughtso. Okay. There'll be some empty seats as soon as this item's over with.
A lot of empty seats.
We'll take about a minute break to get you all out of here. You don't have to be embarrassed walking out. Okay, I have two speaker cards on this. What we'll do, they're all similar. I'll read one, then I'll call the schools up, representatives wherever here to come up, pass them out, and then we'll have the speakers after that. Okay? So, but it's going to read to the schools. "Congratulations on being named a California Distinguished School, honoring your students' rank in the top 5% for academic achievement in the state. On behalf of the entire Glendale Council, I highly commend your students, administrators, faculty, and staff for earning this prestigious award. I look for my alma mater, Glenn Oaks, and they're not in here. Neither's Wilson, neither's Glendale High. But I do have, oh, I'm going to take these down myself. This one I want to do.
I want to do Fremont. My kids go there. I need every..."
Okay. Any other kids in any other schools? Marshall, anybody? You can come up. Fremont.
Did you read the names of the school?
I'm going, I'm reading them. Fremont, Marshall. Shall we do one at a time? Want to do it that way?
Read them all and then they can...
Jefferson.
Yeah, read them all.
Okay, whatever you want. Jefferson, Franklin, and Clark Magnet.
Hey, Leon. Our kid in the school didn't make it, huh? He didn't make it. Next, Jim.
I'm going to talk to the principal.
Yeah.
Would you like it right here?
Are you coming? Well, we've got a couple camera angles going. Usually, this is the best one because they can get you up.
She's going to get our backs.
Five.
Nope.
All the principals.
All those on?
Yeah.
And the crew.
Good king.
Or Marshall.
Marshall.
We're all Marshall.
Yeah. All of them.
Okay. Thank you all coming in. Marshall. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And thank you for the...
Jefferson's tall.
Thank you.
Just coming down. How many of your students are here?
All of them.
That's good. They're doing their homework. Okay, what, yours?
Fremont. Fremont School, my favorite. Did I mention it's my favorite elementary school? Did I mention my kids go there? It is a wonderful school. I just want to put a plug in for the great work that you do. My kids have enjoyed school like no other time before. And it's, I know it's largely in part to your doing, Dr. Livingston, and your wonderful staff, and I wish I had a principal like you in elementary school. Maybe I would have turned out better. I wouldn't be on council. I'd be doing something productive with my life. Congratulations.
Wait a minute. What do you mean by that?
Are your kids in trouble? You're hoping that you get a better grade or what?
Not anymore.
I'm going to be talking in a press conference right now. What happened? Jefferson or what?
Yes. And I have quite a contingent here because we have students from student council, both PK moms here with us today.
Come on up. You're the official to talk to them? The ones over there aren't. Okay. Are they getting it on TV?
Somebody cleared... Yeah, the backs.
Nothing, guys. Thanks.
I'm sorry, maybe we should give them some treats.
I didn't bring enough down. There we go. Do we have enough pens in here?
Yeah.
We sure do. Yeah. We should. I've got the standard seal. There you go. What was that? Artie, stop that!
That was just mood lighting.
Didn't get a pen.
Wait up, wait up, wait up.
There's some more.
Teacher, get a pen. Good afternoon, teachers. Do you want to get it?
What?
Thank you very much. That's all I got. Hey, we got more pens?
That's the motion for giving them.
Okay. My clue's accepted.
Rocky has a bunch.
We need those.
Halloween, Canadian, Earth.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much.
You're not getting any of my comments?
Uh, no.
Oh, good. Nobody heard anything I said on TV. That's okay. I keep forgetting. I'm usually not down here with a mic. And Clark Magnet. Anybody here from Clark? I didn't see you back there, Mr. Doll. Didn't see you hiding back there. This is one school, I watched it being constructed. I know what's above those ceilings, those drop-down ceilings, a lot of pipes, but you guys have done a magnificent job up there at that school. Must be fun to teach there. It is. It's a wonderful campus. I'm just glad it's there. You're reducing some winters. I see some of the science stuff you do up there. I don't know how you do it.
Well, we have staff members, we have employees, we have parents. We're just really proud to have this honor.
And we're glad we have a magnificent school in Glendale. So, congratulations, and just keep it up. See you next year again?
The year after.
The year after, okay. We got some more pens here for you.
Is the board president gonna come up and...
Just wait a minute.
Okay?
Just wait, just wait. I said I have cards.
Oh, you did?
Yes, I did. Two minutes each for a speak. Not even waiting to be called on. Chuck Sandbar.
I'll keep it to half an hour, Mr. Mayor.
Too bad.
Mr. Weaver, distinguished council members, Mr. Starbird, and ladies and gentlemen, it gives me a great deal of pleasure and honor to stand before you, to help celebrate a tremendous achievement. I need not tell you that the schools that you recognize today are just a few of the many that we have. Glendale has 21, 21 California Distinguished Schools. Glendale has nine National Blue Ribbon Schools. This quality and excellence is the result of a deep commitment, skill, professionalism, high expectation, and high achievement. It's the result of a community that cares. It's a result of cooperation and good work. I am very pleased that we have this celebration tonight because it's symbolic of the good working relationship that the school district and the city, along with all segments of the community, have in working together to make our community the good, the good community that we have. We make no apology for success. The very basic tenet of leadership is to recognize quality and excellence, and I stand before you and to, on behalf of the 2,400 men and women and the, some 30,000 students, I am proud to stand before you. Incidentally, you recognized Clark Magnet High School tonight. Clark is one, was recognized this year as a National Blue Ribbon School out of over 9,000 schools in California. Clark was one of 31 schools to be recognized as a National Blue Ribbon School, and that is a tremendous achievement of which we are very honored and pleased. And while I stand before you, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for appearing yesterday with us, along with Governor Schwarzenegger, and for your support of Proposition 1D. Proposition 1D, when it passes, with, we, we here in Glendale will realize $34 million in additional funds to renovate and rebuild some badly needed schools that we still have. We have done a great deal of work, as you know, but we still have six schools to go, and these $34 million will come in very handy to finish the job which we started 10 years ago in rebuilding and revitalizing and, and renovating each one of our schools. Again, on behalf of the men and women of the Glendale Unified School District, we thank you. We appreciate you inviting us here, and we thank you for the recognition of our men and women and these wonderful schools. Thank you very much.
Herbert Milano.
It's on the side of...
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the City Council. My name is Herbert Milano. To, to recognize a Blue Ribbon School is a very, very special event. I think that the efforts that parents, schoolteachers, and the efforts of the students need absolutely this meritorious award. Mr. Najarian, I know that you have transferred your kids from your private school to a Glendale public school. It means that you have given the tremendous trust to the school district by basically making that change within your personal family life. During the ABC referendum, as I was participating very actively, the students that I saw participating actively came from Clark Magnet School, and I know for sure that the quality of education that these kids are getting are really simply something exceptional. But have you ever wondered why certain schools, like Glendale High School, Hoover High School, don't get the designation of a Blue Ribbon School? Have you ever wondered why certain schools don't get it repeatedly, year in after year out? It's because it takes a significant amount of effort in preparation, in tens of thousands of dollars, in basically preparing the paperwork for that. In the meantime, we have schools like Glendale High School where the likelihood of a student entering the ninth grade to finishing up in the 12th grade is less than 80%. That's according to information that I obtained through the California Records Act. And it is the same thing for Hoover High School. And I think that we need a special effort with the city to ensure that those kids who fall through the cracks and are not making it, that we put the level of effort, that we put our hearts into it to ensure that we change for good. This particular black mark that we have that particularly hits us south of the 134 freeway. There are families that need our help. We need to come through for them. Thank you.
Mr. Madurkian.
Yes. I would like to take, is there, are there any other speakers?
No, none on the side of...
I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate all the schools, Fremont, Marshall, Jefferson, Franklin, and Clark Magnet, for a job well done. Congratulate the principals and the staff, the teachers, the students and the parents for sticking it in there, sticking in there with their kids and, and being on top of all of this. I think it's, it's, it's wonderful, not just for the school district, but it's wonderful for the city of Glendale. I would also like to congratulate the board and the administration. Mr. Dr. Escalante didn't say anything. I expected you to come as well. But what's wonderful to me is always the team spirit, that whenever there's a school district event, you always come with all your cheerleaders, and they're all here today. So, I want to congratulate you for fostering that team spirit, and that, that surely reflects in the results that you have achieved over the years. So, congratulations, a job well done. This honor is all of our honor, and we really appreciate you and the students and the principals and the schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, if you would like a minute or two to leave cameras, whatever...
But you're more than welcome to stay. We get some interesting meetings.
Yeah, we do. Aw, shucks. No takers. Just, folks at home, just give us a minute here. You can put the camera on the audience instead of on us for a change. You're listing downstairs. Yeah, there you are. See, that's better.
I can see how many people are here.
Yeah, good crowd here.
Standing room only.
We'll just get the, the video camera out of here.
Thank you.
Thank you for filming. That was a class requirement, videotaping. Yeah. Okay. Now quietly they leave. Okay, what is next, please?
Very well behaved.
At, at 3D is proclamation designating November 1, 2006, as Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day.
Thank you, and I'm presenting this to the Public Records Administrator. Betty, okay? You're not coming up alone, are you? Yeah, bring the crew. And I'll read the proclamation. Wait till I read it, Mr. Najarian.
I'm gonna hold on to it, Mayor, till you give me the sign.
Thank you. Whereas law enforcement agencies throughout the state depend upon law enforcement records and support personnel to provide them with vital services, and whereas law enforcement records and support personnel are crucial to helping law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, capture, and process suspected lawbreakers, and whereas these professionals continually use their expertise and experience to assist in tracking felons, maintaining criminal statistics, and improving apprehension strategies, and whereas the California Law Enforcement Association of Record Supervisors held its 33rd Annual Training and Technology Conference on September 25th through the 29th, 2006, and whereas it is important to recognize California's law enforcement records and support personnels for their valuable contributions to our law enforcement system, now therefore I, Dave Weaver, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2006, as Law Enforcement Record, Records and Support Personnel Day. And the City of Glendale, in honor and recognition of our municipality's police record personnel, Elizabeth Aranda, William Syre, Christine Flores, Britza Fonta, Paula Desa McCowan, Lori Lieberman, Oga Rusian, Maria Zugarazzo, Robert Ku, Lilian Muir, Daniella Peters, Ken Modock, Gilbert Sandoval, Edmund Maestas, Maestas, and Tracy McCoffin. If I mispronounce any of those names, I apologize. Huh?
Now, Mr. Mayor?
Now.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we are very proud of our police force and the great job that they do in maintaining Glendale as one of the safest cities, and we most often associate that with the men in blue who carry their guns and the badges, but clearly, they can't do it alone, and it's this support staff who work with the records and the statistics that can make it a reality and continue our great success. So, as you declared in your proclamation, congratulations, everyone.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, Councilmen, thank you so much for this recognition. I'm very proud of this staff. If I didn't have staff like this, nobody in this room would look as good as they do today. So, thank you so much for the recognition.
Gee. Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, what is next, please?
At 3 is reappointment of Mr. Frank Murphy to the Audit Committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Najarian?
I would move that we reappoint Mr. Murphy, Mr. Frank Murphy, to the Audit Committee.
Move him second at discussion.
There apparently may have been a card submitted on this.
On this one?
On the appointment of Mr. Murphy?
On which?
On this one. Previous one? On the previous one. On the record personnel.
On this item? The previous one? Honestly, I'd double...
Previous? No, I don't have it on Zix. I don't have it. The way they can fill a card out later. And this is on law enforcement.
Okay, was there a second for this one?
On Mr. Murphy, yes.
So, which one is he gonna speak on?
It was on the previous one, on the Law Enforcement Records and Support Personnel Day.
Okay. Well, let's take the, let's take the vote on this one first.
Okay.
We'll call.
Councilmembers Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Going back to 3D, Mr. Milano, two minutes.
Honorable Mayor Weaver and members of the City Council, city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I think that all of the staff people that are behind the scenes, working away, trudging day in and day out, collecting the information, preparing their reports, and submitting it to their supervisors and up the chain of command deserve any accolades we can give them at any time. But I'm here to talk about something that is relevant to those records and is relevant to the leadership of the department and what we expect here as leadership from the City Council. And that is that we do not have, in the City of Glendale, a comprehensive statement of the state of our crime in Glendale. If I need to find out information about crime trends, I need to go to the website of Burbank. If I want to obtain information on the trends or finding the reason why there is an increase in certain types of crimes, I cannot find the information or access it. I have made many, many requests to the Police Department to get background information with regard to certain numbers, and I'm not able to obtain it. I know that the information has been difficult to obtain because the systems were not quite up to date. I believe that the city has made investments in computer systems, but if you take, for example, aggravated assault, which is the only one of the type-one crimes that has increased, we cannot find readily what it is unless you go back and do a California Records Act or dig in. Aggravated assaults have increased because there is domestic violence, and it is when we start looking at the reasons for those increases or the decrease that we can begin to create policy to address it, and we do not get, in the City of Glendale, as comprehensive a report on the state of our crime and the state of our policing as other cities do. Thank you.
Thank you. What is next, please?
At 3F is a selection nominating panel to replace Mr. Ruben Ruby, who resigned on the Glendale Water and Power Commission, and Councilmember Chair Yusefian, Councilmember Manukian are for this.
Thank you. Next.
At 3...
example aggravated assault, which is the only one of the type 1 crimes that has increased, we cannot find readily what it is unless you go back and do a California Records Act or dig in. Aggravated assaults have increased because there is domestic violence, and it is when we start looking at the reasons for those increases or the decrease that we can begin to create policy to address it, and we do not get in the city of Glendale as comprehensive a report on the state of our crime and the state of our policing as other cities do. Thank you.
Thank you. What is next please?
At 3F is a selection of nominating panel to replace Mr. Ruben Ruby who resigned on the Glendale Water and Power Commission, and council member Chair Yusefian, council member Manukian are for this.
Thank you, next.
At 3G is selection of nominating panel to replace Mr., sorry Ms. Zernent, who has chosen not to serve a second term on the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission, and for this panel it is council member Chair Manukian and council member Quintero.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have placed on the agenda for next week the appointment of Mr. Zare Amirian to the CDBG Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Yusefian?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to also put the name of George Adrian to the Historic Preservation Commission as we went through and looked at. As an architect, I think you were highly impressed by the fact that this gentleman is, what does he do?
He's an architect.
No, but he, no, he also prepares the exams for the...
Yeah, we're gonna discuss that next week. He helps prepare the state exams to take license, for licensing architects. So he's extremely highly qualified. We'll discuss more next week. Okay, thank you. Anything else on that? Next please.
Next is city councilor staff comments.
Mr. Manukian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't know if this belongs on the this item, but the Glendale Sidewalk Treasure Hunt, I don't know if we've certified it, but basically the results that was sponsored by the Montreux Shopping Park Association, and they had requested that we verify the results. I think it should, if it needs to come to council, or, I don't think it needs a report, but just to verify it on the council and...
If I might, we talked about that following a meeting, we're under the impression that that was given to individual council members for individual feedback to Mr. Draymond. We can, not necessarily formal council action, although we can certainly put it on an agenda, but the staff hasn't done any follow-up to it.
I don't know whether it's individual council or the council as a whole.
The council as a whole, as I understood it, but...
Right.
So if we can... To verify it individually, I mean, the comment was that certain council members were gonna verify it or wanted to go verify it. We in Public Works should certainly do that for you if you gave us that direction, if you'd like.
No.
Yeah, my sense was it was given to you individually to go, go do this, so...
So let's, let's schedule it, I think it would be, it would be nice after all the community members who want to participate in this event, we'll go and check all these locations and let's have a date so we know a date certain.
Would you like to suggest a date?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
Come back and...
We'll just place it on maybe under presentations.
Right.
Somehow the letter got lost somewhere, which is I got it copied today, so...
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Najarian?
I have two items, Mr. Mayor. First is I'd like to give a, a brief update on what's going on in the MTA. As you know, I promised I would come back with some updates and let everyone know what's happening. The first bit of good news is that last, two weeks ago, the LA MTA received the Most Outstanding Public Transit Agency Award from the National Trade Organization, the American Public Transit Association, which was a very high honor. They came in number one for all the transit agencies across the United States. We're very proud that we received that award, and a lot of people should receive credit for that. Mayor Villarogosa, who was the CEO, the, excuse me, the chairman of the board last year, as well as the current chair Gloria Molina deserved credit, as well as our CEO, Mr. Roger Snowball. The, the next item regarding the MTA is, is rather good news. We are... In front of us at the MTA is a pool of money which is previously unavailable. This money is called the Supplemental Call for Projects. These are, a call for project is an invitation for agencies to submit plans and programs for funding. A supplemental project, in this case, is a funding of projects that went over budget and were not funded in the previous call for projects in 2001, I believe. The good news is that Glendale, in the, in the original call for projects, was awarded $2.8 million by the MTA for the compressed natural gas facility where we will intend to fuel our B-line buses near the railroad tracks and the train station. We, of course, there were cost overruns in the past four, five years, you know what construction prices have done. Glendale is currently submitting an additional $2.1 million request to fund some of those additional expenses, and I can say we stand a very good chance of receiving those additional funds. In addition to the supplemental, there is something called a mini-call, which is a smaller version of a call for projects. There's approximately $14 million that's gonna be made available to public and local transit agencies in the county. This is money that's earmarked for replacing buses and other transit capital items. Glendale has submitted approximately $1.4 million of a request, and I'm also very hopeful that if I'm able to achieve some consensus with the other board of directors, that we'll be able to bring in that money also, which I'm sure will go a long way, Mr. Zern, in replacing some of our buses and really upgrading our, our bus fleet. As we know, our B-line is certainly increasing in numbers, and it is our intention to continue and expand our service. That's about it on the MTA, Mr. Mayor. I do have another separate item.
Okay, Mr. Najarian?
That I'd like to bring to everyone's attention. Mr. Manukian and I had a short meeting with the mayor of Santa Clarita, who, if you've read the LA Times today on the metro section, or the California section, I believe it's called now, is very concerned as, as well as everyone else in her city about the, they call it a mega mine, which is a huge mining facility that's going in Santa Clarita, just on the outskirts of their city limits, which is going to be causing thousands and thousands of truckloads of gravel and sand to be trucked through Santa Clarita and potentially down through the I-5 corridor and affecting possibly us in Glendale, both at the southern end and the, excuse me, the northern end and our western end. The mayor has asked that we consider passing a resolution supporting their efforts to prevent the mine from continuing its operations, and I would ask if this be put on the agenda where staff could perhaps get us some more detailed information and we could look at it. I think one of the issues here is local determination, self-determination, that I'm sure all of us in Glendale are in support of. We would be, I think besides ourselves, if we were learning that a huge mine was gonna open up in our foothill area, for example, just an example, and that we as a city could do nothing to stop it, that it was completely under the federal jurisdiction, and I think we need to show some support in our other friendly cities in the area in their efforts to maintain their quality of life. So if this could be put on, I think Mr. Starbird will be able to get some sort of further information for us to adequately debate this and make a determination.
So be it.
And that's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, comments closed, next please.
5 is consent items including minutes, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Mr. Manukian?
Yes, minutes of the special. For...
Okay. Yes, Mr. Yusefian?
I will also abstain on the special meeting, but I will vote on the city council because I was here.
Okay, so...
I'll move the rest to the consent calendar then.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
And there were no cards?
Not on consent, I don't know, not that I know of.
Council members Manukian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Yes, with the abstention on special meeting.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. What's next please?
Next is oral communication, discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Your speaker, Doris Tweet?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Starbird and staff. My name's Doris Tweet and I'm here this evening on behalf of the Red Cross. Ron Farina was here last week and invited you all to the 15th Annual Comedy Night and gave you some information about the Red Cross. Tonight we have a 30-second video that is, that was produced by Fritz Coleman, who will be the emcee of the event.
Hi everybody, it's Fritz Coleman from NBC4 inviting you to another mega hysterical comedy night to benefit the Glendale Crescent Valley chapter of the American Red Cross. Sunday, November 5th, Glendale Center Theater, 324 North Orange Street in Glendale. Showtime is 6 o'clock, tickets are $20. If you'd like to buy a ticket, two ways to do it, go on the website, arcglendale.org or 818-243-3121. That's 818-243-3121. See you Sunday, November 5th.
Or I do have tickets here tonight. In addition to the, the tickets are $20, if they're pre-sold, they're $25 at the door. We also have VIP tickets for $40, which includes a VIP reception at Milano's before the show and reserved seats at the, for the program. And although this is a fundraiser for the Red Cross, it's a social, social event where you can go and social, socialize with your friends and neighbors and have some laughs. And remember, laughter is the best medicine.
Mr. Mayor, Doris, the date again?
November 5th, at Sunday.
At what time? 6...
6 o'clock, I believe.
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. The reception at Milano's begins at, I believe, 3:30. Yes, 3:30. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, I don't know if you want to, this is another tag team, Rachel Lindley and Kyle Gregorian, doing it together? Ah, oh one speaks, the other does the camera.
She's got a badge, watch out.
I am a drug-free marshal.
Wait, you better wait till they're ready. Are you ready over there? Okay, now you're on. Your name for the record?
Hello, my name is Rachel Lindley, and I would like to say good evening to everyone. My name, I am 14 years old and I grew up in Glendale, which is a wonderful city, by the way. I want to speak to you tonight, this, because this week is Red Ribbon Week. Red Ribbon Week is about encouraging kids to be drug-free and live drug, and live a healthy life. I know that the city of Glendale and did in the past years a lot of education on drugs to youth, but it seems that drugs abuse is still a problem in Los Angeles. The County Board of Supervisors of Los Angeles recently called methamphetamine abuse a problem of epidemic proportions. County Supervisor Yvonne Braithwaite Burke was especially concerned that meth is being sold at schoolyards. She said, "I have to be very honest that some of the people who are peddling meth are preying on young girls and putting them into prostitution, and they are doing this through the schools." I was last week with two friends of mine at the Glendale Police Station to find out what kind of help I can offer here in Glendale. I was told that each kind of drug exists here in Glendale, but the most problem is cannabis and also meth abuse. Meth is a very dangerous drug. Meth users report that they get hooked from the very first time they use it. It destroys the body systematically. My friend Kyle will give you a little booklet about meth, which shows pictures of people It is on the page with the yellow poster. I know what drugs can cause, and therefore I decide to do something about it. Three years ago I became a drug-free marshal, which is a campaign created and launched by the Church of Scientology International in 1993. It is a youth drug education and prevention program to educate youth of ages 8 to 14 on the dangers of drugs and to challenge them to remain drug-free. It started in 1993 with 200 youth pledged to say drug-free, to stay drug-free, and the ceremony was done with real US Marshals. Since that time, the number of sworn-in drug-free marshals are climbing daily with events and activities in 45 countries. More than 3,700, um, sorry, 3,370,000 children have been sworn in as drug-free marshals in schools, culture centers, cultural centers, parks, community groups, and city halls. What I am doing is pledging in the youth to live a drug-free life. And the youth pledge says, "As a drug-free marshal, I pledge to lead the way by living a drug-free life, showing my friends that a drug-free life is more fun, helping my fellow drug-free marshals, learning more about how drugs really harm people, and telling people the truth about the harmful effects of drugs, helping my family and friends be drug-free, setting a good example to all children by leading the way to a drug-free USA." Beside the pledge, we give out information booklets to inform youth about the harmful effects of drugs. Tonight I want to give you a package with the information about the different kind of drugs. This package includes booklets about cocaine, joints, painkillers, LSD, crack cocaine, crystal meth, heroin, ecstasy, and kiddy cocaine, which is also known as Ritalin. It is important to reach our youth and give them the information so that they stay drug-free and have a good life in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
By the way, you're a very good speaker, I'm gonna say that.
Next speaker, Dr. Richard Espirito.
It's actually Kyle, right?
Oh, you're, you're speaking to, I thought you were just handing over, oh, okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kyle Gregorian, I'm 13 years old and I grew up in Glendale here, and now I live in Burbank, and I am recently attending John Burroughs High School, and I'm a freshman. And I have been volunteering in the St. Louis Drugs Race, I'm sorry, I've been, I've been volunteering in the St. Louis Drugs Race now for three years, and we are in our sixth year now, and I am here to invite Mayor Weaver and all the councilmen to our St. Louis Drugs Race on December 10th at Griffith Park, and our website is www.stludryworres.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's a great honor to be up here.
No, you're not nervous, eh? That's a good sign.
Woke it up in elementary school, so...
You're on worldwide TV, you didn't know that, did you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That do it? Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Espirito is not nervous either.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council and staff. I am Dr. Richard Espirito. Mr. McFaul, I would like to ask you a question. Is it, or is it not true that the city of Glendale did and completed a site survey for both parks, libraries, and all public facilities in 1994?
Go ahead with your comments.
If in fact this is true, Duncemore Community Center was funded in 1998 for the correction of ADA bathrooms. That's according to the CAPR report, which I have obtained a copy of, and I will be giving you a copy of this to you later on, Mr. Garcia. After repeated request to the city for parking variance from various developers and architects citing Senate Bill 1818, this prompted me to make inquiries to the Attorney General and to the Department of Justice. The Attorney General is still researching this issue. However, the Department of Justice referred me to a case in Austin, Texas. Mr. Garcia, I'm sure Mr. Aldesco will be able to pull up the entire case for you. In this news release dated September the 28th, 2006, not even a month ago, the... In this news release dated September the 28th, 2006, not even a month ago, the, this was a discrimination, discrimination brought against the developers and architects in Austin, These defendants have to correct parking accessibility, pathways and parkways, doors, community access, common, common use areas, light switches, kitchens, bathrooms, and the reinforcement of bath, bath walls to install grab bars. This was designed and designated for the disabled residents and guests. Tonight, I'm going to turn in a California Public Information Request Act to obtain the names, telephone numbers, and addresses of the architects and developers for those facilities that were listed on Page 45 and 54 of the report, known as the CAPER report. Mr. Kasakian, would you be kind enough to give this to Mr. Garcia? And this is a copy of the letter to, that is being displayed from the Department of Justice. This is for one, each one of the council members, Mr. Garcia, Elaine Wilkinson, and several other, several other individuals. And this is by California Public Information Request Act. I thank you for your time. This is a very interesting situation because Mr. Yusefian, you and I had beefly touched on this issue about public housing, especially, especially affordable housing that needs to be addressed. The federal government has, in fact, set up guidelines for parking and the number of affordable housing units that have to be accessible for people with disability. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. Kasakian?
Next speaker, Herbert Lano, followed by Joe Scopacasa.
You know how to say that.
Joe, just, you're next after Herbert.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Scopacasa.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Weaver, members of the city council, city staff. The purpose of oral communications is to encourage public participation in local governance. And I think this is a, a tradition that many cities encourage, and I am thankful that we have a full five minutes to come to you and, and express our concerns and encourage transparency and encourage accountability. Unfortunately, this is a concept that is not known to many people, especially those who are new to the United States, that it is perfectly all right to come before you and come here with a critical comment or two, to challenge you about the statements that you make, to make you accountable. This is a long tradition in the United States. President Washington was disoriented tremendously during his second, uh, four years. There were newspapers who talked about him because they were all concerned that he might remain or turn himself into a king, but of course, he had no intention of doing so. And we have a significant legacy that George Washington left us, and that is the legacy that he served two terms and left office of his own volition and of his own free will. And it is my thinking, of all that I know in history, that he was probably the first head of state of any major country that gave up power willingly. And he gave us, I think, a very significant level of accomplishment for us all to follow, for all you to follow, two terms. But oftentimes, individuals who are not aware of this tradition think that when we come before you should, it is a, is an affront. And individuals write to the news press thinking that it is an affront for us to come and challenge you. And I think that if you're strong in your convictions and what you're doing follows your vision, then you have nothing to worry about. In cities that have a major newspaper like the Los Angeles Times, they have investigative reporters. These investigative reporters look after us in a way by looking over the shoulders of elected officials to ensure that they are living up to their promises, to ensure that they are being honest, to ensure that there is no waste. But we have the Glendale News Press, which doesn't have investigative reporters. So what happens is that it is up to us, the grassroots individuals, who even though we may work 50, 60 hours a week, still ask for information, study it on the weekend, and begin to find that there are discrepancies and that the statements that are made are not true. And I can, if you'd like to, I can give you and mention several of those that were presented from right here, from city officials, absolutely false statements. But I'm not here to bring those to you. I'm here to encourage those other individuals that are new to Glendale or that are new to the United States, that this is a process that we encourage. We do not have investigative reporters, so now it's up to us to look after the statements that you made. Next week, we're going to have the Downtown Specific Plan, a discussion of the studies that were made during six months that included the participation of many residents and the participation of many builders, developers, and architects, most of whom do not reside in the city of Glendale. And there is a document that was presented, which is called an Environmental Impact Report, and many of the sections of the Environmental Impact Report are not truthful, do not cover the issues properly, evade. And it is when those circumstances come across that we need to come forth and tell you about it and tell you, to you in front of the public. What will happen to our traffic? Exactly what will happen to it? What will happen to our open space? Where is our investment in the quality of life and how do we measure it? Unfortunately, the Environmental Impact Report requires that the citizens of Glendale or any other city that has a problem with it to hire an attorney and file a lawsuit using the California Environmental Quality Act. It is a, it is a California law that has no teeth unless we ourselves decide to invest our own money and hire an attorney to make it forth. So it gives you the freedom to say things or to paper over issues that are fairly significant to our community. We are in the process of increasing our population density to astronomical levels, and in my opinion, without the appropriate review of how it impacts the whole community. We have gone from 120 or so new residences built per year to somewhere between 2,000 to 3,000. We are about to face a significant change in our city, and next week, I think we need to address it. And that's one example of what we need to do as residents to come before you and before the public. Thank you.
Joe Scopacasa, followed by Bonnie Adams.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Weaver, Mr. Yusefian, Mr. Najarian, Ms. Menuchyan, Mr. Quintero, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Zern, Ms. Wilkinson, uh, McFaul, and Mr. Starbird. And Ardi Kasakian, my friend. Good evening to you all. I haven't eaten yet, so I'm a little nervous.
Welcome to the club.
I also, I want to see a smile on all your faces, by the way. I was gonna watch the game between St. Louis and Detroit, and I'm.
Who's winning?
I have no idea. I had a little TV, and Mr. Giant said, "Who's winning?" I said, "I don't know." I turned it off. I don't want to interfere with your meeting here. But anyway, there'll be four more games after this, I'm sure, maybe five. Anyway, the reason I'm here is kind of a two or threefold, actually. I, I'm celebrating the 100th anniversary of Glendale here, and also I'm celebrating my 20th anniversary here in Glendale. I lived here in Glendale for 10 years, and all of a sudden, I decided to buy a little condo because I love the city. And about three, four months ago, I bought a smaller condo, a forest lawn. So I'm planning on staying here for a little bit, okay? I love the city.
I'm ahead of you.
I think the, the police department is doing a great job. This is a safe city. I think the fire department is doing a great job, and I'm thankful to them. And I think Mr. Starbird and his staff are doing a great job. The next thing I'd like to mention is.
Any particular group of the city that you haven't thanked?
I love you, everybody.
Don't push your luck.
There's a, I'm not too sure about the news press, Glendale News Press.
Quit while you're with me.
Anyway, I'd like to read an old article that I saw in the paper yesterday on the Glendale News Press. It says, "Swipes at Council Getting Out of Hand." I am a loyal viewer of the televised city council meetings on Tuesday nights. However, lately, I have been disgusted, disgusted by what I have been witnesses, witnessing, and it appears if things are getting worse. No, the city councilmen have not upset me. Instead, I watch this disrespectful, irreverent, and uncivil people hurl insults, falsehoods, and defamatory comments as council people, especially the mayor. It is always the same group of people who get up week after week with no better purpose than to hear themselves speak and to be seen by viewers in the city. It is apparent that many of these people are using the city's time and money to campaign for themselves or for someone else. To me, showing this degree of disrespect to an elected official is the last recourse of intellectually exhausted mind. This is an article in the paper. This is not my words, but I, I kind of agree with most of this. And I love you all, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Bonnie Adams, followed by Barry Allen.
Oh dear, I guess I'm one of those people represented in that article. I certainly have done my share of, of, I don't want to be knocked off the list of malcontents. I really don't. I really, um, whatever I've had to say has been honest and sincere, and whoever wrote that letter, fine, they have a right to say what they want to, but so does everybody else. So, you know, they could just stuff it. I'm here to bring up a point that I had brought up a number of months ago, and that is the fact that we need an information and referral service here because there are lots of programs out here that, that would really make a lot of the disabled population independent and be a help to the elderly as well. And there are a lot of state and city programs that we just don't even know about. We need a clearinghouse. We need an information referral service. How many people know that there's an act, a telephone access program that the state has that will give equipment to a disabled person that needs it? They'll give TTYs to the, to, to the deaf. They'll give phones with big buttons and big numbers to, to partially sighted people. They'll give, you know, a headset or cordless phone to, to other people that need it. Like I said, I found out about the GWP programs by accident. Now, I'm sure everybody knows, how many people know that IHSS, you know, in-home supportive services, does deal with in-home providers for the state, for qualified individuals? I mean, maybe a lot of people do, but a lot of people don't. And this, to me, is part of the ADA coordinator's job. And if the ADA coordinator doesn't have the time to do it, then they, then an assistant should be hired that has, can gather that information and keep it so that people have a place to call and know where to go for what. And there should be a consumer advocate to be a help to, to these people. There's no place for people to go. All the ADA coordinator does that I can see is that, is it, she's a member of the city manager's office, and she's been given this title because they needed an ADA coordinator right now, and boy, they rushed it through. That's okay. That's okay. But there needs to be more done. It's, it's not just for, just, it's, ADA is not just for filing grievances. It doesn't work that way. There's a lot of other stuff that goes along with being an ADA coordinator. You can't spread yourself too thin. It's a full-time job. I mean, there's, there's just not enough public relations done around here that is really going to help people. And I really am, you know, a little upset because this, this, this really should be taken care of and addressed. Thank you.
Barry Allen, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. Yesterday, a local resident, Mara Yakopian, had her letter published in the news press indicating that she is disgusted with the people that appear before the city council to seek accountability. She claimed those speakers don't respect the council, but she forgot to tell the reason why people come regularly before the council. We come here expecting accountability from public officials. Ms. Yakopian forgot to say that she and Ara Najarian share the same parents. She is a sister of council member Najarian. She even contributed $3,000 to Najarian's election campaign, as a good sister would. I would ask her and ask you, can the public respect council members that have never complied with disclosures required under the Political Reform Act, the money they have received? Can the public respect a council that appoints commissioners on the basis of political patronage? Can the public respect council members who receive political contributions from city employees when the city charter, uh, charter prohibits such practice? Last election alone, council members received $80,000 in contributions and reciprocated with over $10 million in salary and pension increases. The drafters of the charter understood the relationship between employment and money and forbade city employees to contribute to municipal election campaigns. These employees are attempting to overcome the prohibition of the charter by forming a union with the objection, objective of circumventing the charter. The spirit of the law should be equal to the letter of the law. Will Mr. Menuchyan and Mr. Weaver say no to the contributions that will surely come to them this coming election? We know now that for many city unions, their contributions make the case of more pay for less work. Ms. Yakopian, if you're watching, when the council is accountable, respects the public, and respects taxpayers' money, then the public will consider respecting the people on this counter, on this council. Barry Allen with Vanguard, the only publication that's been banned from the city hall. And certainly for those, including Ms. Yakopian, who would like to receive the weekly Vanguard, you can do so by calling this number, 243-1502, to receive the weekly Vanguard publication. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Francisco Camacho. I hope I got it right. Mr. Yusefian?
I'd like, I'd like to make one clarification. I think as, as the speaker spoke, I don't want people to get the impression that we did receive campaign contributions from the employees. We did receive campaign contributions from the employee unions. There's a big difference, I think, if I'm not mistaken, under the Hatch Act, if I'm not mistaken. It allows the, uh, unions to contribute, but this city has a policy through the city manager that I was made aware of, and I think everyone is made aware of, that you cannot take money directly. directly from a city employee. And the first time I ran, I didn't know there was a person who was a close friend, but was a city employee, gave me a check for $99. And as soon as I found out she was a city employee and what the policy was, I returned that money. By the way, I lost that race. But nevertheless, I'm very cognizant of where the money comes from and where I take it from. But I think what Mr. Allen was trying to indicate was that the money came from the city employee unions, not from individual people. I hope I was correct. Thank you.
Margaret.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and the viewers out there. I would like to bring up something once again, and it's regarding the patrons' club of Glendale Community College. You know, they've been around a long time, their only purpose being to raise money for the scholarships for needy students and also benefit them. There's even a fund where we give them money to help them with their books and so forth if they cannot afford them. And we do that. Our big thing is our fashion show up at the Castaways on November the 3rd. And the tickets are $35 for lunch, a fashion show, some wonderful door prizes. There's also a silent auction and the chance at $1,000 cash prize drawing. And of course, all the money goes to scholarship. And as I've said before, many of the ladies give freely, not only of their time and energy, but donating to- for prizes and for various other things that go along with putting on a fashion show. So if you would like to help us go on giving these wonderful scholarships to the students that deserve it more often than not, and go on to universities and do other things around our city, benefiting our city. The number to call is 243-0908, and we would appreciate you doing so. Now, my next subject is my favorite one, of course. Yes, I do campaign. I come here, and why do I campaign? I campaign for the good of my city, for the quality of life that our citizens deserve. And if they're not getting it, they're going- it's going to be heard, why we're not getting it. I am going to keep saying so. Right now, I'm looking at a letter, and I have pictures, which I don't know how to get on the screen. You know, I don't even have a computer. I don't have email. I'm just me with my telephone or whatever. But these pictures are something to behold. This is the rear of the Montrose Collections. And this is from the lady who lives right behind, Sharon Thompson. And here she's saying-
Excuse me, Margaret. We did receive pictures, at least I did.
Right. Well, but I want to be sure. I don't want it to slip through the cracks and have people-
Want to let you know.
If you didn't receive them. I thank you for bringing that to my attention, that it was. I see she has it on here. But as we reach October the 15th, we should be nearing the 45-day notice that was served on Montrose Collection. "Our concerned neighbor base has expanded to include the south side of Honolulu Avenue Senior Complex Apartments directly across the street, the Harmosa Apartments directly behind the banquet hall, and a neighborhood-" This is a neighborhood who has endured loud talking and music, smelly trash, abundance of moving cars for almost a year. Interestingly, the Glendale Police had an officer stationed on the banquet hall premises until 3:00 a.m. to keep control on the outside noise due to the many complaints every weekend from the senior complex across the street and the neighbors behind. It will be very good to reach some kind of closure on this situation. We have dealt with the police, who say there is nothing they can do because Montrose Collection has a permit stating they are a restaurant banquet hall and can have banquets. This was signed by Elaine Wilkerson. How did this happen? How can this type of situation get so far down the pipe? It's time for the city of Glendale to change some of the rules. Originally, zoning had permitted them seven parking spaces almost a year ago, which we contested and lost. Now they are using all their parking, the local restaurant spaces, Cordon's Market, Honolulu Avenue, and the alley. There seem to be no rules to stop this fungus from growing bigger and bigger. We depend on our council to be the keeper of the rules, but this item seems to be a political problem, and no one seems to want to deal with it. How can you change the city charter rules to approve outdoor grilling at banquet halls when it states it's illegal? Has this become a political problem? And the owners of this banquet hall are getting richer by the moment at our expense. If you continue to look the other way and deny the situation at the Montrose Collection, we will definitely have a problem." And this is signed, of course, by Sharon Thompson. And I know you've got a list of the police activity, I mean, the activity that since July the 29th, every single weekend there has been banquets and so forth and problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Wait up. Mr. Najarian first, and Ms. Wilkerson.
Maybe we're going to talk about the same thing, but can we get an update on this matter? I know that a few weeks ago, we did receive a report that there's some sort of enforcement action against them, and maybe that's what you're going to address. But I would like, if it's not, I would like to have something perhaps next meeting to see what's going on and what stage we are in the enforcement.
We can do an update on that. I just also would like to clarify that I do not sign zoning use certificates, and the information is incorrect. It was given permission as a full-service restaurant.
Thank you. And staff took note of your comments, Mr. Najarian. Next speaker, Francisco Camacho, followed by Violeta Real. Two for one, eh?
I'm sorry, Camacho is the emergency- the emergency for the family. I talked to for Camacho.
I'm quiet, didn't-
Yes, Camacho is the emergency for your family. Please go to for the house.
Francisco Camacho had a family emergency just now.
Oh, 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 so-
She's going to speak in his place.
Your name?
Letizia Ceballos.
You didn't have a card in, did you? Did you have a card in?
She didn't have a card in.
All righty, could you just get her name on here? You go right ahead.
Okay, my name is Letizia Ceballos. Trabajo in Glendale Hilton for nueve años.
I worked in the Glendale Hilton for nine years.
Estamos aquí pidiéndoles apoyo por el boycott que tenemos por más de un año. Estamos peleando para poder tener beneficios, un seguro médico, más que nada también respeto y un estándar de trabajo.
We're here today to ask for your support in the boycott of our hotel. For over a year, we've been fighting for better wages, health insurance, and more than anything, respect and standard in our workplace.
También estamos aquí porque el Consilio de Los Ángeles está apoyando a todos los trabajadores de Los Ángeles y esperamos el apoyo también de ustedes a nuestro boycott.
We're also here because we know that the Los Angeles City Council is supporting the hotel workers in Los Angeles, and we are here to- we expect and we hope that you will support us in the same way by supporting our boycott.
That's all. Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Just put your name on there. Thank you. Violeta Real.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Violeta Real. I worked in Glendale Hilton for five years in housekeeping department. I am here to say that the workers at the Glendale Hilton want fair wages and health insurance and respect. We can't afford to pay for health insurance for our families. We have been asking the company to be neutral and to respect our decisions for more than a year. They are still not listening to us, and that's why we're called a boycott. We want you to move- we want you to move the city employees' holiday party to another location. The city should be stay neutral by staying out of the Glendale Hilton until the company moves the right thing. We hope that you support us in this struggle to improve our lives and our families' future. Thank you for receiving us.
Thank you. Sister Mary Jean Ferry, followed by Sister Anne Lenore. You're coming together?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Sister Mary Jean Ferry. And this is Sister Anne Lenore Eifert. We're Catholic sisters from the parish of Holy Family in South Glendale, where we live and worship. We belong to a religious community, the Sisters of Charity, and our sisters are located west of the Mississippi for a meeting each year. I'd like Anne Lenore to tell you how we came about thinking about moving our event from the Glendale Hilton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. The thing that alerted me to the hotel problem was a picture in the Glendale News Press. I think we're all familiar with the statement, "A picture is worth a thousand words." And when I saw that picture and then read the article, I knew that we had to do something about our reservation there at the hotel, and Sister Mary Jean will explain that to you.
One of the core values of our community is justice, and because of that, we did research. We met with the managers of the hotels, and we talked to many of the workers. And upon that, we really learned that there was a resistance on the part of the management to really meet the legitimate needs of the workers and also allowing them to vote by car check in order to have a union. So because of this, we realized that if we went to the hotel, we'd be given tacit approval to the way the workers were being treated at the hotel. We believe that they really do need injustice, better wages, better working conditions, and also healthcare benefits for themselves and for their families. Couple weeks ago, I was arrested in the demonstration for the hotels, and it was a pretty difficult time, 16 hours, for somebody at my age. But I did it. And as I was doing it there, I kept thinking of the hotel workers. If they can endure what they endure day in and day out, I could be there at least for 16 hours to show my support. Tonight, we ask for your support, that you would really consider carefully where your meeting is for your Christmas event. We're asking you to pull your event and go to another location and also for your future meetings until this boycott is ended. Thank you.
No, no, please, folks, we don't applaud or boo in here. Sister Anne Lenore, is she here or...? Oh, you were. I'm sorry, I got it wrong. Thank you. Leon Mayer, followed by Joy Sokoloff.
I'm here with my usual non-controversial announcements. My name is Leon Mayer. Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Star-
But they haven't always been non-controversial.
Well, we like to consider them non-controversial, but sometimes they don't come out that way. In any event, I'm chairman of the Author, Artist, and Friend Series, and I was not here last Tuesday because we were able to get Ken Jennings, the famous Jeopardy's author, to the library. We had a full house, and I know you were working hard at the same time here at the city council. Tomorrow night, we're having the Cool Dames Bringing Heat, the mystery writers, three ladies, famous writers, Denise Hamilton from the Los Angeles Times, and she has a national reputation as a mystery writer, a murder mystery writer. Harley Jane Kozak, she's a movie actress, maybe not as controversial as another one we had here earlier this year, Mr. Starber. Harley Jane Kozak is also a movie actress, and I said she was not controversial. In any event, she's a prominent author, and she was also on the soap operas, and she also was a movie actress in the movie Agrophobia. And we're having a newcomer to Southern California by the name of Patricia Smiley. She's from Washington, state of Washington. She went to Pepperdine, and she's written a book called False Profits. These are all murder mystery novels. So for those of you who are interested in writing and those who are interested in mystery and murder mysteries, please join us tomorrow night at 7:00 at the library. Parking is free. Admission is free. You can get your parking validated. I have another announcement I want to make because of the election next Tuesday. I think it's timely for me to let you know that we're having John Dean back to the library, John W. Dean, the former Nixon Presidential Counsel. He was at the library for about two and a half years ago. We had a packed house then. We expect to have a packed house on November 15th, Wednesday, November 15th, at 7:00. And he's written a book called Conservatives Without Conscience. Over a decade ago, he and the late Arizona Senator Barry Goldwater were working on a joint inquiry into what was happening to conservatism, and he carried on after Barry Goldwater passed on, and he's finished the book. And it's not intended as a partisan work, but it was rather out of- Mr. Goldwater's conservative being distressed about certain things that were happening. And this will come after the election, and that will be kind of interesting in itself, and we'll just wait for that. But John Dean, November 15th. And I'll also remind you, you can get flyers at the library. You get flyers to our events here in the city hall. And we also will have events in December. We'll tell you more about that the next time I come here. And we have a book nook at the library where those of you who are interested in buying books, but you want to save a few dollars here and there, we have a book nook run by the friends at the library, and you can get wonderful books there at the book nook for bargain prices. Thank you for your time.
Joy Sokoloff.
My name is Joy Sokoloff. You'll have to forgive me, I have a water bottle. I had mouth cancer for two years, so I have to drink water. I get really dry. Mayor Weaver, city council, and staff, I am the volunteer as the president for the Glendale Rose Float Association, hence the T-shirt. This January 1st is the city of Glendale's 94th float to go down Colorado Boulevard. Our float is built by Phoenix Decorating and is fully decorated by adults and students who volunteer their time. It's a wondrous thing to be involved in, and anyone in Glendale is invited to come and join and decorate with us. You can log into our website. Hopefully, you can read this. GlendaleRoseFloat.org, and put in your application. The real reason I'm here is because last week I was watching the city council meeting, and certain people were getting up- were- people were getting- have- let's see, how to explain this? There were questions raised about finances of the Glendale Rose Float Association and of Dreaming Roses. Fingers have been pointed, names have been named, and innuendos have been made. And I am not a public figure, and no one is pointing their fingers at me. These people that are making these accusations know my phone number, but they aren't calling me. Why? Because I'm not who they're after. I'm here to say this has got to stop. I'm here to say this has got to stop. There is nothing wrong with our finances, there has never been anything wrong with our finances. The Glendale Rose Float Association's biggest fundraiser is Dreaming of Roses in September. We report all expenditures, sponsorships, contributions to the federal and state government according to their rules. Our organization has a financial committee to oversee any financial activities. Our organization is the only organization in Glendale that gives money back to the city. In the last three years, we have given back $45,000 every year, and $3,500 goes not of that, but we also paid $3,500 for the entry fee for the Pasadena Tournament of Roses. I am very upset that someone believes that we are missing $50,000. There is no missing money. Excuse me. It's a shame that one person can come up to this podium and undermine something as wholesome as the Glendale Rose Float with twisted thoughts and words. Thank you.
So let's talk to our communications.
Thank you.
Mr. Yossefian.
I think Rose Float Association is a great organization, and you do a great job working. I think you need to learn from the other speakers, you need a bigger...
A bigger shirt?
No, 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 a bigger sign. Bigger sign, because the number doesn't show. You see, it's faded away.
We were running out of the house, and it didn't quite work.
Okay, and I have, you know, as a member, I like to ask you blunt questions, because it has been asked from me, and I don't know, because I don't feel with you. So while I have you here, I apologize for putting you in here, forgive me for this question.
No, 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 you're not, you're not. I know everything that's going on.
How much does Rose Float Association have in their coffers?
Right now?
Yes.
Which account?
Both accounts.
I'm sorry? Yeah, it's around, right now, it's around $91,000.
Total $91,000.
Yeah.
How much of that is the Rose Float Association money, and how much of it is the Dream of Roses?
There is no account, they're all in one, they're all GRFA account, they're all Glendale Rose Float accounts.
I apologize again, because the reason I'm arriving to that conclusion, because you said which account, so I assumed there are two accounts.
Well, we have a money market.
So there's one.
No, no, we have a money market, we have a checking, and we have a savings.
Okay, so your total asset is $91,000.
It's around $91,000 right now. I don't have the report in from the Dreaming of Roses, but I expect to have that in the next few weeks.
That's all I wanted to know. So I guess for the people, please don't ask me anymore, you know the answer, it's $91,000.
My phone number is on here.
Wait, 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 let me read it, because...
It's actually unlisted, but everybody has it anyway.
249-0226. And if you want to volunteer, call her on that number, too.
I'm getting, I'm getting all the students right now. So thank you very much.
And good luck with your issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our communications. What does next, please?
Mr. Mayor and Council, at number seven is adoption of ordinances. At 7A is ordinance amending section 4.36070 of the Glendale Municipal Code, 1995, relating to utility users' tax exemptions, offered on October 1706 by Councilmember Quintero.
Mr. Quintero. Mr. Mayor, is there a second?
I will be consistent with my previous actions and abstain from voting on this.
Okay, I do have four cards. Yes, two minutes each. Mike Nagel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and citizens of Glendale. My name is Mike J. Nagel. I'm here to speak in favor of passing item 7A. I believe that it's something that needs to be done, to relieve the utility users' taxes for disabled members of the community. However, I don't think it goes far enough. It should extend to all people who are disabled and within the economic guidelines, as all the way down to the age of, anyone who's of the age to have his own household. I also believe that rather than simply Glendale Water and Power Services, that all utilities should be included as well. It was argued before that it would be too difficult with all the various telephone companies and cable companies, and, well, of course, there's only one gas company, but I don't really understand why that would be. The arrangements have already been made with each and every one of these companies to collect the taxes that they're getting from everybody. Why would it be more difficult, or outrageously difficult, to make arrangements to exempt some of their customers from that using the same procedures that you already use with Glendale Water and Power? My friend Bonnie Adams has made inquiries in this direction from the other utility companies, and they've all said, "We need the city council's permission." Well, why not give them permission and allow them to take care of the paperwork the same way as Glendale Water and Power does? That's really all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Bonnie Adams, followed by Dr. Richard Spiritu.
I'm Bonnie Adams. I, of course, I agree with Mike. I have inquired for years and years and years about getting exemptions from the other companies' utility taxes, and they all say, "Go to City Hall. Talk to your councilman. If they say okay, then we'll do it." They've never said no to me. But my real issue here tonight is something that, a point that has not come up in the amendment or anyplace else except the original ordinance. That is the income cap on, for people. When this ordinance was adopted in 1995, the income cap was $13,950, you know, before eligibility was stopped. Now, it's still $13,950, and nobody's considering making adjustments for inflation and cost of living accommodations. Expenses have gone up, but the money, the money really hasn't. We went to the Consumer Price Index site today and checked on it, and $13,950 is now worth $18,457. You really need to raise the income cap. Before this is adopted, this is, I mean, you can't, it's too low. You really need, I really request that you consider raising this income cap, because you're cheating a lot of people out of something that would really help them out a lot. And I still go for option two or four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nagerian.
Thanks for coming forward, Bonnie. We might as well call this and subtitle it the Bonnie Adams Ordinance, because it was through your efforts, you had been before us several times, raising this issue to us, and we, even though it may have seemed that we weren't listening, we were listening. We, when staff came to us, we said, "Let's give Bonnie everything exactly as she's asking for it." So when it came before us, I mean, this is what we intended to do. Now we're, now we're on the verge of passing this ordinance, and you're telling us that, "No, no, forget what I said before, I want additional benefits." I wish you had, I mean, we were listening to you. I want to, I want to let you know that. Every time you came up here, and it was through your efforts that this ordinance came to be. For, I don't know if you might think that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it really is. We tried to accommodate everything you asked for, because we thought you had good points. But it's a little difficult now for us to do anything when you're coming in and saying, "Well, I want not just the water and the power and whatever else that we're exempting, but we want these other utilities as well," so...
Well, Mr. Nagerian, you had said that at first anyway. You had said, you had sort of said no, but, you know, that was just an opinion, but we hadn't looked at the cap, the income cap on the, the most important thing right now is the income cap issue.
We didn't see the report until yesterday concerning this, that's why we didn't bring it up early.
We didn't bring it up early, because we didn't know.
But didn't we discuss it two weeks ago?
Not the income cap.
When it was introduced?
And also, we only had two minutes, and there really wasn't time to bring it up.
No, we didn't, we couldn't.
What is that cap based on? The $13,950?
I'd just like to tell you, if it's not, if you don't have the time here tonight, you have the other workdays of the week to bring it to staff's attention.
Who?
Well, you can start with Mr. Starbird, Mr. McFaul, any of the others down the line, and if they're, they will get you to the right people.
We just, we were unaware that, we were unaware of this until yesterday.
Anybody's allowed to call the city departments, bring up their problems.
We have, this, you, I mean, you kept stopping us, because you kept telling us that wasn't on the agenda, we, or...
If it isn't on the agenda...
The report wasn't going to come out, the report wasn't going to come out till August.
If it's not on the agenda, it can't be discussed.
If it, the report wasn't going to come out till August, and it didn't come out till September, and Mr. Franz last week said the report was, it's errors anyway, and so I really think that you have to consider the income cap at least.
We can come back, we can come directly to Mr. McFaul or Mr. Starbird in the future, but right now, it's, we just don't have the time to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Richard Spiritu, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, once again, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff. I'm in favor of an ordinance being passed by the city of Glendale to relieve the burdens of the people with, Americans with disability. However, in this report, I have a couple of major questions. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, there are approximately 54,000 individuals that reside within the city of Glendale at this time that are considered disabled by the federal government. I understand that this ordinance is going to be applied to a certain group of individuals over age 55 with a low income. I put the figures to that, and I come up with a number slightly higher than what is stated in this report here, of a maximum of 1,000 households would qualify. The number I came up with was closer to 3,000. My question is this: if I'm 1,001, do I get the program? Or is this going to be set up as a lottery system for the housing programs, section eight? I would like that qualified. Also, reviewing this program, I still haven't seen a definition for what is a disabled individual. I would really like that to be nailed down, so anybody who in the future would like to come back and look at this would be able to say, "Yes, I am qualified because," or "I have to get my doctor's okay on this." Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Mr. McFaul, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Dr. Spiritu, we did discuss this estimating, and anybody that qualifies will be covered.
Oh, lottery.
It's simply an estimate of how many. We don't know exactly how many.
That's correct. The estimate was simply done to give council a parameter on what the financial impact would be. There's no limit, if it was 3,000 or 5,000, they meet the eligibility requirements.
We had this discussion the last meeting.
As to who's disabled, I thought we were in agreement, it would be someone either receiving Social Security, disability, state...
That's in the ordinance, actually, page two.
It's defined in the ordinance.
It's defined, correct.
Okay, Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of the city council, and city staff. I think we should all be thankful when you're heading in the right direction. I think that giving individuals with disabilities and individuals with low income or individuals with fixed income who have difficulty paying a break from this particular utility users' tax is beneficial. So I want to thank Mr. Quintero for leading and presenting this particular ordinance, but I have some concerns. And the concerns are that this particular change to the exemption will benefit 192 additional individuals. And when you combine all of the individuals who get this exemption, there'll be 1,000 households approximately, and there's a $50,000 revenue loss to the city. And according to your documents, it is a big concern due to financial uncertainties. And I began to wonder, where was that concern when the fire department asked for and obtained an additional $5 million in additional salaries and overtime? We have a significant amount of wasted overtime by the fire department, and it seems incredible to me that we will have the people with the least means, with the most difficult situations, now having to be taxed in order to support a budget that is getting into deficit, and a budget that is going into deficit because of the abuse by the fire department. They are not accountable, you don't make them accountable. There is a significant reduction in fires in the city for the last 20 years. A lot of the activities that occur with regard to the use of the ambulances need to be reviewed. We need to have the flexibility to be able to look very hard at $5 to $10 million of wasted money, because it will benefit a larger number of people. This is a reverse Robin Hood process, we need to change it.
There's been a motion in the second. There are...
Yes. The issue of the $13,950, I asked earlier, I didn't have an answer to. Where is that sum coming from? And as I look at the city staff's report, that was presented last time, on the background information, it talks, it gives the information about $13,950, based on the city's program for low-income seniors, however, on the following page in the table, and the estimated maximum lost revenue per year of $50,000 is based on age and income criteria of $28,600 for households of one to two people. So how did we go from $28,600 to $13,950? And the $28,600 is the GWP low-income programs? That's the criteria for GWP?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm reading in the report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it is quite confusing. The city has two programs for exemptions. One is the, as you've stated, the senior care program for GWP, where there's a discount on your electric and water bill, and that has an income criteria for a household of two of $28,000.
Okay.
The second program has been in existence for many, many years.
Since 1972.
Since 1972, and in the 1990s, the income level, and this is for seniors age 62 and over, to be exempted from utility users' tax if the income level is $13,950 or below. That income level has not been changed since it was established in the early 90s. So two different programs. What is, what we have recommended for the persons with disabilities is that it mirror the GWP income criteria, which is the $28,000.
The $28,000?
Yes.
But, no, that's not, that's not, that's not in the ordinance. In the ordinance, it says $13,950.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right. The income criteria, because it's a utility users' tax exemption, is, remains the same.
Which is similar to the low-income senior program.
I think what he meant to say is, it was structured to mirror what is provided to the seniors for utility users' tax exemption. Apparently, a senior can apply for two programs, the elder care and utility users' tax exemption.
Correct.
And they both have two different income levels, because I think the original request had been, you know, you ought to apply what you give to seniors to handicap, we utilize the same income level. Now, why the table in the staff report references the $28,600 is, to me, rather confusing. I don't know why that is.
Right. And the fact that the annual income limit that was...
Let me, let me back up. The exemption for persons with disabilities, the income criteria... disabilities, the income criteria is the twenty-eight thousand.
Okay.
The, what you're reading where it's the thirteen nine fifty is just for low-income seniors age sixty-two and over. So that part of the program is not being changed.
So-
For persons with disability, if the income criteria-
Where is that in the ordinance?
It's in, uh, paragraph B, low-income disability exemption for a person who is fifty-five or older, um, and if the gross income for the, uh, person with disability
It doesn't state it. It says-
That's right.
Resolution of the city council.
And, and let me give you the reason for that. That income level is changed each year by GWP. So by adopting the ordinance this way, the two, the two programs administered by GWP for persons with disability have the same income criteria-
Okay.
And it will, that will-
So, so in responding to Bonnie's question, uh-
Twenty-eight thousand.
I did, and you did, just what she did.
Right.
We looked at the thirteen nine fifty and presumed that's what's applying here. You've got a repeat of the existing ordinance, which includes all the existing language, including the language for the low-income senior exemption. At the end of the day, if you get, if you read on to, to paragraph B, as Bob points out, the disability provision is provided, uh, for those people, uh, with the higher income levels.
Without a dollar amount in the ordinance.
Because it tracks the amount that's referenced for the, uh, senior care program, which tracks annually the HUD income levels.
Correct.
So in effect, it is self-adjusting.
Just so we're all clear, this income level is the same as the GWP program, which is the twenty-eight thousand five hundred.
For, for a household of two.
And that's based on HUD's figures?
It's actually adopted annually by the Public Utilities Commission for utilities.
So the extent it's adjusted for the utilities, adjusted for us as well.
Okay. Any further discussion? There is a motion on the floor. Not roll call.
Council members Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Upstaying.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. Mr. Manukian?
One more issue that-
This item brings up, and that's the thirteen thousand nine fifty from the early nineties.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's something we should, should look into. Uh, there are probably more needy seniors in terms of, uh, their income limits, and that should be updated. I don't-
Mr. Franz is coming back.
I don't think that should be continued.
Hey, you're exactly right, and, and we actually have that on our, um, to-do list. We, we wanted to keep the two issues separate because-
That's why I mentioned it after we voted on it.
Right. And, and that's our same thought process. The, the, uh, the dollar impacts are clear, what, what you've just voted on.
Right.
When we bring back the, uh, the income levels, we want that to be equally as clear on what the impacts are.
Thank you. Next, please.
Seven B is ordinance adding chapter thirty point three-six to title thirty of the Glendale Municipal Code nineteen ninety-five relating to density bonus incentives. This was offered on October seventeen oh-six by council member Najarian. B one is resolution adopting new fees.
Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move seven B one.
Second?
I think they want seven B, which is the ordinance first, and then consideration of the resolution after that.
Seven B. Okay. Is there a second? There's a second. Discussion, roll call.
Council members Manukian?
And seven B is the ordinance?
We're doing seven, yeah, seven B the ordinance, yeah.
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. And as there are motion on seven B one?
Move seven B one.
Is there a second? There's a motion, second discussion, roll call.
Council members Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Taro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
No.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. Next, please.
Eight is action items, and at eight A is city measure regarding consideration of infrastructure propositions on the November general election proposition one A through one E and eighty-four. At eight A one is resolution supporting propositions one A through E and proposing end proposition eighty-four on the November two thousand and six ballot.
I'd like to ask my colleagues, how much detail do you want to go into on each proposition?
Who requested the item to be on the agenda?
Mr. Starbird, who requested it?
It pretty much had been requested we bring a report back on the implications of the bond measures in the ballot. Uh, if you want a staff report, Elaine Aguilar will introduce it. Uh, we've got a number of department heads, uh, prepared to contribute on the different bond issues and the implications for the city.
How much detail would you like?
Mr. Mayor, I'm still unclear as far as who asked to put this on the agenda. I know we discussed issue of proposition ninety. I don't know if we asked, if anyone, does anybody recall? We asked A, B, and C, D put on there? Okay, and, and this, this is my issue with this. While I may agree with some of them or not, the fact is, I do not think it's appropriate for me as a council member to take a stand on propositions, let the public make their decision based on the documents that are out there. I, I, I feel it's inappropriate for me to say what you should vote for and what you should vote against. That's why I'm surprised that this is here. The other thing is, we did, I did ask for proposition ninety to put in, not to support or oppose it, but to discuss some of the implications of it. So that's for the same reason I would like to discuss the implications of it, but I would not vote to oppose or to support it. How I vote in the ballot box is my privilege under the Constitution, and I would like the people to go there next week and vote and exercise their rights. But I don't think it's appropriate for me as a councilman to tell them how to vote.
Mr. Mayor, what's your pleasure on your day?
Well, there's one that doesn't want to discuss it. Who else doesn't want to discuss this?
Well, I agree with, no, discussing it is fine, but I agree with actually passing a resolution. I'm not interested in passing yea or nay resolutions on, uh-
Well, there's a lot here.
These issues.
That's why I'm asking how much you want to go into, and appears there's now two that do not wish to pass the resolution.
Well, and we can, we can give you the staff report, Mr. Mayor, and, and talk about the implications, and you all can decide whether you want to take a position or not.
Well, we've all received the report on the propositions. You don't need to present it to us again. I mean, it's a question of whether we-
Well, there is some value from a public standpoint of having the residents, I think, understand the implications of the bond measures.
And how much detail do we want to go into it?
But it's entirely up to you.
There's an awful lot of propositions on the ballot.
Yeah.
I mean, an awful lot, and I think it's in the public interest that everyone know about all of them, but-
That's fine. Mr. Najarian?
I have a question of the, the city attorney. As I understand, our ethical, uh, duties and obligations is not to in any way advocate the, the passage or the rejection of any of these, of any proposition, any, any ballot item. However, we may perform the role of educating the public, which I think is where Mr. Starbird was going. So, the question is by adopting an ordinance, uh, or resolution supporting these, are we in any, in fact, crossing that ethical line by, by advocating rather than just educating?
That's a, uh, fair question, Mr. Najarian. The general rule is, under stansum vi mot, that, uh, publications cannot spend, uh, public dollars on advocating for, uh, propositions and such. However, there is, uh, there is authority for taking a position on a, uh, initiative measure, either support or oppose, or, um, and that's, that's the extent of, that the council as a body can, can take, can't take any further action to actually advocate for, uh, such measures. So there wouldn't be anything improper about adopting a resolution, either in support or opposition to any, uh, particular measure.
As for me, just so it's known, because it was in the paper already, I was with the governor yesterday, and I'll admit, I'm at least voting for one D. And maybe I'm voting for the others, but people won't ask me where I stand, and I'll be glad to tell them. But I've gone public on one D, so.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Mayor, in the staff report?
I'd like to hear a brief synopsis of each proposition, so people at least would be educated as to what, what each proposition represents and, uh-
What implication to the city? Two minutes.
And we, we also have our lobbyists here.
Your newly, newly appointed lobbyist.
Okay.
Yes, very briefly, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I will, um, highlight, um, direct benefits to Glendale, since that's probably what you're most interested in. There's a number of infrastructure bond measures on the ballot, as you're aware, propositions one A through one E, and then proposition eighty-four. Proposition one A isn't a bond measure in and of itself. What it does is add more protection for proposition forty-two, which is the state gasoline tax revenues, basically making it more difficult for the state to use those monies for non-gas tax purposes. To the city of Glendale, that amounts to approximately eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars a year in proposition forty-two revenues. Proposition one B is a bond. It's called the transportation bond. Um, this provides three sources of potential funding to the city of Glendale. One of them is a per capita. We'll actually receive a per capita amount for each of our residents. The second, there's also competitive funds available, grant programs. And the third would be, uh, if the legis, if the bond measure is approved by the voters, there will be implementing legislation and trailer bills where specific projects can be included, and that's a third opportunity for the city of Glendale. It also provides money for the STIP program, um, which, uh, those funds are critical for some Glendale projects, such as the SR one thirty-four San Fernando Road flyover project. Um, it's been clear to us that if this bond doesn't pass, that the, the city would be in jeopardy of possibly not receiving that, that project. Proposition one C is a housing bond.
Hold on. If it passes, how much?
Um, the estimate is twenty, Mr. Zarian here, probably is twenty-two million dollars.
So if one B passes, the city will gain twenty-two million dollars?
No, no, not the city.
Oh, that's what I wanted to know.
Right, no guarantee. I said possibility.
Yeah, we should, we should point out that the, that the flyover bridge, uh, was authorized and budgeted with funding that when the funding for construction was held up as a result of the two or three years of the state's fiscal crisis-
Correct.
Uh, in effect, during that period of time, was also one of the highest rates of increase in construction costs. As a result, the construction of that project has almost doubled because it is a concrete and steel project. Uh, as a result, that project now has an estimate of a need for an additional twenty million dollars to complete its construction. It's probably stands at the, at, at, at a high priority for additional funding. Uh, its likelihood of getting that funding is much, much stronger with the passage of the bonds, and it will be if the bonds don't pass, because there are a lot of projects that were in exactly the same condition as the flyover bridge. So, no one can guarantee you that with the passage, it'll be funded, but without the passage, that project looks pretty bleak to get the additional funds to finish the construction.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Yusefian?
What I wanted to know is you said per capita, we get a certain amount. What would that be to the city of Glendale?
Six million.
Six million. Thank you.
That's what I was looking for.
One-time, one-time money.
One-time money, six hundred dollars.
Six million, correct. That's a per capita.
Thank you.
Um, proposition one C is the housing bond. Uh, there is no per capita allocation in that. Um, it's, uh, funding for, uh, affordable housing. Uh, there's park funds included in that, two hundred million for park development, park rehabilitation. Um, the city has been successful in the past in receiving some of these housing bonds, uh, the funds, and specifically two point six million for the cerebral palsy affordable housing project is just an example of, of a locally funded, uh, project in Glendale. Proposition one D, you heard, um, the school district speak about that one earlier. Um, it was thirty-four million dollars in that to Glendale schools from proposition one D, the education bond. Um, and that's money for elementary schools, uh, all the way on up to state universities. Basically for modernizing existing school facilities, constructing new facilities, um, including colleges, community colleges, and universities. Lastly, proposition eighty-four is the-
One E.
Oh, I'm sorry, one E. I skipped that one. That is the levy and water resources, uh, proposition. Um, again, the only opportunities there would be, uh, grant, competitive grant funds that may become available. Majority of the funding is to, um, deal with the levy, the levies up in Sacramento.
Also emergency preparedness, they said?
And there's some funds set aside for emergency preparedness, and those are all competitive, uh, grant programs.
We might, we might also note, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that I think it's the housing, uh, bond, and that was one, housing is one C or one D?
One C.
One C.
One C. Also contains, uh, special, um, pots of funds for the development of urban parks in, uh, high, is that the one that has the high-dense areas?
Two hundred, right.
Two hundred million dollars? Uh, frankly, that, I, we understand that that portion of that bond issue, uh, a large hand in that was, uh, by our assembly member, Dario Fromer. Uh, frankly, the way it's written, it, it, we think it has Glendale in mind, and that would be one of those pots of special money that we think we'd be particularly competitive for. No guarantee, but it is certainly written with, uh, the characteristics of Glendale, I think, uh, in mind, and we ought to be very competitive for something like that. A lot of the funds available cities under all the bond issues, frankly, is going to be on a competitive basis. Make an application, compete with other agencies that are competing for funds, but at least creates a pot of money that you then have an opportunity to compete for.
And lastly, regarding Prop eighty-four, even though the majority of the money is for, uh, the levies, there are, is also, uh, funding in there for the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy for the upper Los Angeles River. And as you may be aware, Glendale's portion of the San Gabriel, of the Los Angeles River is, falls within that jurisdiction, so that would make us eligible to apply for funds for the Riverwalk project. Um, there's also funding in that one for, um, nature education, natural history, and our Parks Department has been looking at that as a potential, uh, funding source for Duke-Mason Barn, which will serve as a museum educational facility, hopefully in the future. Um, that concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Najarian, then Mr. Yusefian?
I'd just like to add to what, uh, Elaine was saying. I'm, we've been watching this closely, uh, on the MTA. In terms of one B, which is the nineteen point nine billion-dollar bond, uh, the MTA is expecting that just by the formula basis alone, there's going to be five billion dollars available for the, the MTA projects. In addition, through the competitive, uh, program, there may be up to three billion dollars also available. So that's eight billion dollars for LA County, which is going to be available. The good news is that some of those funds and the decision on the programming is made through the California Transportation Commission, which of course, we know, we're fortunate enough to have our former mayor Larry Zarian on. So Larry, if you're watching, we love you, Larry. Um, in addition to Caltrans and down to the MTA level. So Glendale, I think, would have several opportunities to secure some funds that would be beneficial to the region, uh, and, uh, I think, potentially, uh, go a long way to making our traffic and congestion and transit situations much, much better than they currently exist. Not that I'm advocating a vote in any way, but for educational purposes, that's how the, the funds may, uh, may arrive and affect us in Glendale.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Yusefian?
I'll make a motion to note and file.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, note and file, roll call.
Council members Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi, since I guess none of us asked for it. Hey, what's next, please?
Uh, I don't believe so. Herbert.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Come back, Mr. Milano. That's, I had your car right in front of me. I thought it was the next one. I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. I, I needed a smile today. Uh, members of the city council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. Whenever we take a look at these, um, bond measures, I always find something critically missing from all of these bond measures. And as you very well know, I am an advocate of transparency. So if you are thinking about advocating for it, I would ask you, what is the comprehensive per capita indebtedness of Glendale taxpayers today? If you don't know, then we are voting on something that we, in which we are uninformed. You see, the problem that I have with bond measures is not necessarily the lofty goals we have for them, but it's rather the, the lack of information that taxpayers get with regard to our obligations. Most of us who plan for or buy life insurance or save for our kids don't want to leave them with a burden, and yet that's what a bond measure does. We pass along to our kids and our grandchildren our benefits, and I think we have to look very, very hard before we accept these bond measures. A building, a school building does not create a better education. The Glendale dropout rate has not changed in decades, and yet look at all the millions and millions that we have poured in. The infrastructure information has to be given to us on a yearly basis. It shouldn't be a surprise. We shouldn't have to come up with a bond measure when we only go in two miles an hour, you know, on the Glendale freeway in the morning, which I take every morning. Why should we? We should have measurable, systematic, yearly reports on how we're doing with regard to all of our infrastructure, our roads, our traffic speeds, the sewers, the storm drains. We don't have that. We only get a surprise when things are really, really bad, and then we're asked for a bond measure. And that is what I think we need to absolutely change. Thank you.
And I'm sorry if misplaced it. I do have one more card-
At 8B is City Treasurer, regarding City Treasurer's quarterly investment review as of September 30, 2006, motion to note and file report.
Give us good news. Tell me there's money.
Where am I going to?
To the city treasurer.
The one with the checkbook? Who signs our checks? Be nice to him.
I'll go straight to Mr. Baruchy. Show us the chart.
First, an overview. The quarter ending September 30th, 2006, was good to the city portfolio. Portfolio balances were not only stabilized, but increased. Our cash position was not only replenished, but increased. We've moved away from a cash management effort and again are focused on our investment program. Let's kind of take a look at some of the numbers. I don't think any of the numbers here are going to be as controversial as some of the earlier matter discussed before council, and I tried to keep it relatively simple. Don't bet on that.
How come it's not higher?
What we've done here is basically put together information on a quarterly basis, and we're comparing the quarter ending September to the quarter ending June. The portfolio balances, the good news is the portfolio balances increased by ten to eleven million dollars to end up at four hundred and eighty-four, call it four hundred and eighty-five million dollars. Now, that's, to put that into perspective, this was really the first quarter in the last six that actually saw an increase in the portfolio balance from one quarter to the next. Interest earnings improved to four million, and let's call it a little over four million dollars, four million, two hundred thousand dollars. That is an increase of three hundred thousand, better than the last quarter. Again, it doesn't look like much, but that three hundred thousand dollar increase translates to a million dollars more in earnings for the year if we maintain this level, this level of our interest rate. I kind of believe that actually that 419 can only improve because what we have coming up in the next eight, or the remaining eight months of this particular fiscal year, from November through June, is we've got twenty-five percent of the portfolio, or about a hundred and twenty million dollars rolling over. And so therefore, what we'll see is we've got a lot of dollars becoming available, and as they mature at basically three percent, if the interest rates, if the yield curve stays where it is in a five percent marketplace, those, that three percent on a hundred and twenty million will be replaced with money at five percent. The rate of return, let's take a look at that. That is at three fifty-three percent, three-point-three, three-point-five-three percent for the quarter compared to three-point-two-nine. That's an increase of twenty-four basis points. We're very pleased with that because that's almost a quarter of a percent. And if you, council people, remember what we went through last year, we were actually just inching along month by month, where a typical quarter was that we would only increase maybe six or seven basis points. So right here in one quarter, we can see something changing. Now, it's always pointed out to me, well, what are we doing compared to the state fund, the local agency investment fund? And where do we sit in comparison to that? Again, the local agency investment fund is used by many municipalities, special agencies in the state of California. A good portion of their funds are there, and the smaller municipalities simply use the state fund as their investment vehicle. They're looking at LEAF, they're at four-point-nine-two for the quarter. That's gangbusters. And that's up, I think that comes out to about thirty-nine basis points over the last quarter. But there's a reason for that, and let's kind of take a look at the next and final slide. And we're going to take a look at the Treasury yield curve. The, I want to point out, oops, I didn't want to do that. I wanted to point out that the local agency investment fund is a, basically acts as a money market fund, and its average weighted maturity is about six months. So that basically, what you have here on the Treasury yield curves for both June and September, you can see that we have a situation here where the yield curve is either flat or it's inverted, meaning that the best place to be for investing money is if you're managing or investing short, one year, one year and in. And it's been this way for quite a while. So in the parlance, you've got LEAF that's in the best place that it can be. It's on the sweet spot of the yield curve, and it's been there for the last several We actually put this up for one other reason, and let's take a look at the June yield curve right here. And the reason why I want to point this out is that it basically sits at around five percent in the area where we basically shop. In the past quarter, this third, this first quarter of this fiscal year, the Federal Reserve has had two opportunities to look at the interest rate, the Fed funds rate, and they've passed without increasing interest rates. In fact, they're going to be meeting again tomorrow, and the best guess of the Fed watchers is that they're going to pass again. They're in a watch and wait situation. That five percent in our marketplace is probably going to hold through the end of this year and right through the beginning of summer next year, when we will be having a hundred and twenty million dollars come due. So we will be buying, and we can, we can kind of talk confidently that our expectations are that we should be able to replace that three percent money with five percent money. That's what we're looking for. So...
Mr. Yasef.
In other words, I guess what you're trying to say is why LEAF has a higher amount of percentage and higher turnaround, I mean, higher gains, but it's a short term, and it's also, because it's a short term, it's also more vulnerable. If the interest rates went down, you would lose a lot of money. It's just that this time, they've been lucky since the Fed funds have been going up and up and up, interest rates, so that's why.
Yes. What we're saying is they've been very fortunate. They've been in the best possible place that they can be.
But we do have money in LEAF also.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And we've got...
Yeah, small.
Small amount.
Not too much, but enough to run our daily day.
Well, right now, we're keeping probably fifty-five million dollars there.
Not small.
We...
Might be small to you, but to me, it's pretty big.
We use LEAF for liquidity. In our, in our, in our portfolio, we've got four hundred and eighty-odd million dollars, we look to LEAF as being our, the place where we can get cash overnight.
How about, how about the, so fifty-five million in LEAF, how about the other three hundred million? What are the, what, do you have, just off the top of your head, how much of it is in two-year, five-years? What kind of?
Our average weighted maturity is down to just about one year now.
One year?
Eleven, eleven, yes, because of the runoff and the fact that we've been in a cash management mode for most of last year, we, without being cash, looking for cash, we were replenishing cash and not really investing. So therefore, our entire portfolio simply moved up month by month throughout the entire year. So where we were always above two as a weighted average lifespan for our portfolio, we've cut that in basically in half by about a year.
So you have a hundred and twenty million this fiscal year that rolls over, and then prospectively another maybe three hundred million that would roll over again?
Well...
The next two years or so.
No, let me, I could, we're going to have a hundred and twenty million come due in the next eight months. We've got a hundred and eighty million total in the next twelve, so including the one-twenty, add another sixty, so it's one-eighty. We've got a hundred and seventy-four million, that's going to mature in the year, in the next following year.
So in two years, you've got three hundred and sixty million dollars or so maturing.
Right.
Yeah.
And then beyond that, we've got thirty-five million dollars and change. So it's laddered that way, is, if you're looking for buckets.
Mr. Starbuck.
Well, just, because we focus so much on LEAF, we should point out, maybe Ron, I'll run if you have the historical figures, but for a long period of time, this relationship between LEAF and the city investment portfolio was reversed because the interest rates were moving in the opposite direction they are today. As a result, one would say, Mr. Baruchy was sitting on the sweet spot of the yield curve, and we were consistently beating LEAF month after month after month after month by a good spread.
Well, we were beating LEAF year after year after year.
Yeah, year after year. I mean, many years, we were beating LEAF.
And funny you should mention that, but I do have those numbers.
Okay.
That the city portfolio averaged sixty-seven basis points per year over the past seven years over LEAF. So we beat LEAF by a half a percent.
So if we, if we, if we charted this out and you showed the LEAF curve and the curve on your portfolio, on an average basis, we beat LEAF by almost two-thirds of a point, two-thirds of a percent.
Well, there's something in what you just said that I've always agreed with. I didn't exactly follow all of that.
Well, you just said, you said our average yield has beat LEAF by sixty-seven basis points.
Right. Okay.
So my point is, the big picture is because rates, rates obviously go up and down, LEAF has a twenty-four-hour turnaround for people who invest in it, agencies invest in it. As a result, they're shorter term. This one snapshot gives the impression that maybe our performance isn't as good, which indeed it isn't, but if you look at it over time, the policy that you've approved, the policy that Mr. Baruchy's been implementing, shows that over time, our treasurer's office has beat on the average the LEAF yield for our portfolio.
Right, and the other thing here with this particular slide, the Treasury yield curve, this is, it's been flat or inverted for almost a year now, which is unusual. Normally, the longer you put your money out, the greater the expectation that you would receive more for it because you're taking additional, if you want to call it, risk. You've got to wait longer to get your money back.
Mr. Menucha?
Yes, I was reading the report that you give us every quarter.
Month.
Is it monthly?
It's monthly. It's a monthly report.
The monthly report, you had a number of investments in the, in the beginning of the report, and I can't remember...
Yes.
The title of it. A number of them were becoming due over the next three to six months. Some were becoming due in December, some in March and June.
Uh-huh.
And that was a big number. Is there any way you can attach that report to, from now on, to the report that is presented to council? Because I saw that report, it's inside, and a number of issues I want to raise regarding that report, just, and you've covered most of them here today.
Right. Well, I...
Can we attach that report, or is it...
I think it's in that report. Maybe what we need to do is, is kind of...
Attach the report, right. To, but it's not in here.
Oh, you're talking about...
The monthly report that you provide.
Yes, the monthly report that I provide probably runs about fifteen, sixteen pages. Is that what you're receiving? Are we receiving that?
Yes.
Okay, but I believe if I understand your question, the answer is in the report, in one of those fifteen pages.
Yes.
Yes?
I would like to see the report attached to...
This quarterly?
The agenda.
No, he wants it electronically attached.
No, no, not even, I, I want everything electronically.
Yes.
I think it, it should be included in the report because the report that you provided us and the report that you, that the community has is two paragraphs.
You mean for this? This quarterly?
When you give your quarterly report, he'd like that report attached to it.
Right.
I see.
Much more extensive, extensive report.
Well, you're, you're getting to my closing remarks.
Okay, I'm sorry I jumped in that, but...
That's fine.
But, but I think having, having the full report that you provide the council members as well as probably management.
Well, I was going to close with reminding council and maybe the people out in the audience and maybe inform them that the city treasurer puts out a monthly report in much more detail, and the detail for this is really on the monthly report. And that can be accessed by going to the city website...
Okay.
And pulling that, pulling down that, that report, it's there. It is, it is very extensive, very detailed, and all the particulars are there. We do it each and every month. In fact, in olden days, the information that we have in a month's report used to be the quarterly report. And now that we do it every month, we're generating a lot of paper and a lot of information on a monthly basis.
I don't want any of the papers.
For those folk that are out there, for those folk that are out there that would like more information, more detail, and they don't have access to the internet, they can simply contact the city treasurer's office and, and we'll make a copy available to them. For this presentation, since the city council is so familiar by looking at these numbers month in and month out, while we're looking at this on a month-to-month basis, it's kind of difficult to get a little perspective. If you take a step back and kind of take a look at trends and kind of do some analysis as to what's happening, this is a good vehicle for basically getting, getting a snapshot as to where we are and where we're going. I certainly didn't want to attach all the detail because with fifteen to sixteen pages worth of detail, it's closing in on nine o'clock, I think we would be driving many of these people to bed.
Okay, that...
In summary, the trends are good, the trends are positive. The portfolio bulked up during the quarter, gaining dollars for the first time in six quarters. Interest earnings and our rate of return are up, and will continue to improve as we have significant dollars to reinvest the remainder of the year at significantly higher rates. And I would be remiss if I didn't add that the city portfolio remains very safe and very liquid. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? There's a motion to note and file.
I'm going to 8B, one second.
Discussion, we'll call.
Council members, Menucha?
Yes.
Najarion?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi, and thank you, Mr. Baruchy, and have a good evening. What's left of it. What is next, please?
At 8C is City Attorney regarding Proposition 90, eminent domain and regulatory takings. At 8C1 Resolution expressing opposition to Proposition 90.
Mr. Starbuck, am I going to Mr. Garcia?
Yes, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We were asked to bring back a report on Proposition 90, which pertains to eminent domain and regulatory takings, and as well, we've attached a proposed resolution which would allow the council to express its opposition. Again, the proposition deals with eminent domain and regulatory takings. The eminent domain portions have two main aspects, one dealing with what is a public use and the other addressing what constitutes just compensation under the eminent domain law. With respect to public use, Proposition 90 would significantly narrow the definition of what constitutes a public use and would, for the most part, preclude the transfer of property to third parties when that property has been acquired through the use of eminent domain. Essentially, Prop 90 would require the public entity that acquires property through eminent domain to own and occupy... through eminent domain to own and occupy the property for a public use. Um, this would, in many instances, preclude transactions, typical redevelopment and affordable housing transactions that we've engaged in, and many redevelopment agencies and, and housing authorities have engaged in for, for decades. Um, with respect to the public use definition, the Prop Ninety would also impose a requirement that a public agency that has acquired a piece of property for public use and, uh, no longer needs the property for that specific public use, must make an offer to the property owner or its heirs, uh, offering to resell the property for its, uh, fair market value. Uh, the exceptions, uh, uh, in the Prop Ninety for this, for these, uh, public use provisions, uh, include a provision that would allow a public agency to lease or, or, excuse me, to contract for the operation of a public use facility, uh, for the operations of, for example, parks or libraries, those sorts of things. Um, and the other exception is that Prop Ninety will not preclude the use of eminent domain to acquire property and transfer it if the, the public entity can make a specific finding that that particular parcel is blighted or contains hazardous materials, or has some other, uh, enumerated public nuisance activity on the site. Um, the second component of the eminent domain provisions relating to Prop Ninety, uh, have to do with, uh, what's ju, just compensation. For proprietary governmental uses, uh, for example, a power plant or a airport, uh, Prop Ninety would require that the payment of just compensation be at the value that the government intends to use the property for. The current law is that the property is valued at what is the highest and best use under the existing zoning. Um, Prop Ninety would require in circumstances where the government's intended use would, uh, give, give the property a higher value for the government to pay that value, um, in an eminent domain action. Uh, the other, uh, important aspect of, uh, Prop Ninety related to just compensation, uh, has to, uh, requires that the public agency pay all, uh, reasonable expenses and costs actually incurred. That's pretty much in line with, uh, current eminent domain law, except that it's, the way it's worded could require, uh, the payment of attorney's fees as a matter of right. Currently under eminent domain law, the public agency will be required to pay attorney's fees in the event that the court determines that the public agencies' offer was so unreasonable in light of the, the other party's offers and ultimate judgment. Um, and, and this, this law appears to require the payment of attorney's fees as a matter of right. The second portion of Prop Ninety, um, that, uh, greatly would, uh, would greatly affect the city, has to do with, uh, government regulations that would cause a substantial economic loss. Uh, the part of the problem of all these provisions of Prop Ninety is that it does not clearly define some of these terms, doesn't define substantial economic loss, although it does give a few examples, including downzoning, limitations on the use of airspace, and elimination of all access to property. Um, there's gonna be, I think, if this, uh, measure is adopted, there's gonna be a significant period of time where not only challenges will probably occur, but where there will need to be some interpretation of what constitutes substantial economic loss. Is it ten percent? Is it fifty percent? Um, a lot of people that we've talked to have said it, it could run the gamut. Um, a government action is defined as any, any statute, charter provision, ordinance, resolution, law, rule, or regulation, so basically any governmental action that could cause, uh, economic impact to property. And this is a change to, uh, current takings law, current laws, that if a, a regulation would deprive the owner of all economically viable use, uh, to taking, this, uh, significantly lessens that standard in, in, in our opinion. The exceptions to, to this provision, uh, there's an exception for public health and safety. Um, we note that this is, uh, a stricter and tighter, uh, exception than currently for, uh, regulations that are for public health, safety, or welfare. That's a generally broad category of, of, um, regulations that, that governments can adopt. And, uh, there, the last exception, uh, notably, is obviously for existing, uh, rules and ordinances that are in place on, on the date, uh, that Prop Ninety is enacted, and any amendments to such rules that are consistent with the original rule, and that do not significantly broaden the application of the rule. Um, just in general, um, obviously, though, this will be a significant, uh, impact to local government and the way it operates, um, but I would say that, uh, I would add that a lot of these provisions are gonna have to be, uh, addressed over time through judicial interpretation, because it's, it's so vague, uh, so poorly drafted, um, that the full extent will not, not be known for quite some time. Um, and that's, that's the, the basics of my report, and I know Mr. Starbuck wanted to add some comments.
I just wanna know, where does that leave a city? In limbo, while the courts are arguing this for years?
Uh, my, my. The city attorney can answer for himself. My, my impression is it raises a huge question, relative especially to land use entitlement decisions by local government. Uh, because this question of what the Act calls a regulatory taking, which is, uh, defined in the Act as government actions that result in substantial economic loss to private property, is really in the eye of the beholder for a court eventually to decide. Uh, one could describe this as a full employment act for litigation attorneys, uh, only because the Act doesn't have enough specificity to say, what is a substantial economic loss? So if I happen to own a piece of property that's adjacent to an area that a city council is rezoning, and I happen to think that rezoning has significantly affected the economic value of my property, I hire an attorney, we file a lawsuit, and I and the city have to go to court to resolve that. Uh, in the state of, in the state of Oregon, they had an initiative-
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, in the, in the, in the state of Oregon, in two thousand and four, they had an initiative called Prop, uh, Thirty-Seven, which essentially restricted state and local government from take, making land use decisions that would have a negative economic effect on landowners. Uh, the last number I had was that, uh, to date, there's been twenty-two hundred lawsuits filed, uh, alleging that there's, uh, been damages upwards of five billion dollars. Uh, those will obviously move through the courts, what, what the courts conclude, uh, is yet to be determined, but just that implication alone, I mean, transfer that from state of Oregon to an area like Southern California, and you can only imagine the implications on a city council, uh, trying to make land use decisions, uh, whether it's upzoning, downzoning, updating your general plan, all of those are regulatory actions which anybody can allege, uh, have some economic impact on their property, and as a result, seek, uh, damages and compensation. And as a result, I, I think the implications are, as indicated by the American Planning Association, uh, could have, could, could, could pose a pall over what we've known to be good urban planning, uh, in the state of California.
What I, what I ask, one scenario, for instance, is this what I'd like to see happen. In Glendale residential area we talk, there's too much traffic. And if you go out and look, there's areas that are zoned multifamily, but there's single-family homes there now. Now, once those single-family houses are torn down, and apartment complexes are built, you increase traffic congestion. So if I and colleagues want to say, go out and look at certain areas of multifamily, and downzone it to single-family, if the predominant, uh, homes on the block or whatever are single-family, Prop Ninety would put us in an untenable position where we could not make that kind of a land use decision to attempt to reduce traffic, future traffic in an area.
I think, Ms. Mayor, I think you'll find that, that this, this component of Prop Ninety was designed specifically to address, uh, downzoning situations like that.
And I, I would note that too, that downzoning is, uh, given as an example of a substantial economic loss without regard to how much the loss is, it's just-
Yeah.
Substantial economic loss is a downzoning. So one argument you're going to hear is that you can't downzone my property at all, because that causes substantial economic loss, period, without reference to how much dollars it actually impacts you.
So we would sit here with our hands tied, watching traffic congestion increase, and we'd have to tell the public, sorry, we can't do anything about it. If, if you go down this road-
It will likely freeze in place for some time all existing zoning. It'll be very difficult to update, uh, your general plans, your, your zoning ordinances. And certainly in the case of a community that's attempting to, uh, maybe move from, from older general plans and zoning that had higher uses, uh, and as we've done, as we've moved through many of the multifamily areas and looked at, at situations where there's economic viability and existing, uh, level of density to try and reflect that in updating the zoning, uh, there's no question, you're gonna fall into this component of Prop Ninety that frankly attempts to specifically address downzoning and make it difficult for government to do that.
In downtown Brand, where you can now build a fifty-story structure if you can park it, and our, our efforts that we're trying to make to bring it down to twelve, fifteen stories, same thing would apply. We would have to pay for what it would be worth if a fifty-story structure was there.
Well, there, it, it's not quite that simple, but it certainly raises an issue that a property owner could raise, and say, before, if I could park it, I could build it. Now, we'd raise lots of arguments, saying, wait, at the end of the day, you know, there's lots of other things that mitigate against that, the EIR, your design controls, all of that. So in effect, with the current DSP has been recommended, you really haven't had a regulatory taking as defined by Prop Ninety. But once again, it opens the door for anybody who thinks that they've had some substantial loss as a result of a regulatory action, take you to court.
And who pays the bill for all the court costs defending?
The city.
City. And that's the taxpayers, that's millions.
Including the guy who files the lawsuit against you. You're paying their court-
That could be.
Their, no, not could be. You will be paying their court costs.
If it's brought as an inverse action.
That, that part is clearly defined.
You're paying, you're paying that, yes.
Okay, that's one part that's clear. And, and one thing, one thing, the way this is written, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, the way this is written is, let's say the city decides to eminent domain a property for purpose of, let's say, affordable housing. We go and we purchase the property, the owner of the property is willing to go through the eminent domain, because they do have some protections through the eminent domain process. So they agree to eminent domain, city goes through the eminent domain process and acquires the property, the next-door neighbor decides that, didn't think that that was appropriate, so they could sue us that we use eminent domain and take us to court. So it doesn't have to be the parties that are involved, it could be anybody that can come and file a lawsuit, and it doesn't even have to be somebody who lives in the city. It could be somebody from outside the city.
Is that true?
Well, for, if they own a property, I mean, a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion of, of the neighbors of people whose, whose properties have been acted on through, you know, some government action, what maybe the city approving a project on a particular site, maybe a neighbor sues claiming that that caused substantial economic loss to their property, because it caused them to lo, lose a view or, you know-
Understand logic.
Negative impacted the value of their property.
Think of that in the context of variances.
Or CUPs.
People using this as a means to argue that they should be reimbursed because they are unhappy with something that's been given to a neighbor.
What, what I'm hearing, though, is that as the public becomes more aware of the implications of this Prop Ninety, the, um, those opposed to it, the number is growing. Yeah, the, the percentage voting against it is growing, because it's, on the surface it looks very simple, and what the intent was, but then when you start looking at all the other ramifications and the, everything else that's been worked in this poorly written law, it's, it could be so totally damaging to local government, other states.
Mr. Mayor, we, we, we might point out, just by way of context and background, that, that what was originally called the Anderson Initiative was what it was initially known as when it was, you know, first began to be circulated after being filed with Attorney General or Secretary of State, was, uh, in the wake of the Kelo versus New London, Connecticut case, uh, which frankly had no legal implications in California. Uh, but it was, but that, that, that decision of the U.S. Supreme Court, where the city of New London used eminent domain powers to acquire a single-family home for the purpose of economic development, not redevelopment as we know it in California, where you have to have a project area in determination of light, but for pure economic development, which is permitted in the state of Connecticut, and which the U, United States Supreme Court determined that inasmuch as it was allowed in the Connecticut statutes, uh, to empower cities to do that, that indeed they could utilize eminent domain. That was picked up by the meeting, as you recall, swept across the United States as somehow an expansion of eminent domain powers, so that cities could take single-family homes for economic development purposes. Uh, it had no implications in California, that decision didn't have any implications, didn't broaden the powers of redevelopment agencies, uh, but was picked up by the press, raised concerns by the public, and it's, it's that context in which Proposition Ninety was spawned, frankly, to utilize that concern about that rather narrow issue, and utilize it to expand further to limit the ability of government to, uh, do what we know in California to be our land use planning process, uh, eminent domain through redevelopment process and the likes.
Well, I do have a couple speakers, you wanna hear the speakers?
Yeah. Well, we hear the speakers.
Hear your second.
May I have an opportunity? And as I said, I, I don't like to lobby people on one side and another. I, I'm one of those crazy guys that reads that big pamphlet that comes to you instead of just that little one that you usually get, and you kinda have to figure out from, uh, two paragraphs what it is. Uh, and, and this is a section from that big pamphlet, and this, this is basically the analysis by the legislative analyst that everybody gets on Prop Ninety, and these are a couple of segments that I wanna say, this, this is done by the legislative analyst, so it's not my words, it's their words that everybody gets in the state of California. Uh, these are some of the things that it affects, the rules, uh, he says, what laws and rules could require compensation? Downzoning property. This term reflects to decisions by government to reduce the amount of development permitted on a parcel. For example, a government action to allow construction of three homes on an acre where five homes previously had been permitted, commonly called as downzoning. So that would say, that's a taking now, you gotta pay me for those two units that you took away. Limitation on the use of private airspace. This term generally refers to actions by the government that limit the height of a building. For example, a government rule limiting how tall a building may be to preserve views or maintain historic, historical character often is called limitation on airspace. That will be considered to be, uh, a taking. Eliminating any access to private property, this term could include actions such as closing the only public road leading to a parcel. In addition to the examples cited above, the broad language of the measure suggests that its provisions could apply to a variety of future governmental requirements that impose economic losses on property owners. These laws and rules could include requirements relating, for example, to employment conditions. So if we say, you gotta hire a certain union, they could say, that's a taking, you're costing me to spend more money, that's employment conditions. Uh, apartment prices, rent control, that's a taking, you can't have that. Endangered species, you can't build because there is some kind of a, the net catcher there. That, so there goes your protection with environmental. Historic preservations, and consumer financial protections. All of these, and this is just a little bit, and I strongly suggest the people of Glendale to take the opportunity to read this proposition, and, and I think after you read it carefully, just keep that in mind, do you really wanna handcuff yourself and the rest of the city? Because that's what this will do.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think we should add to the list, but I'm sure the legislative analyst wouldn't think of it, but design review. Some question of, any, practically any design review decision that affects size, bulk, cost of materials, or whatever, would be allowed.
Yep. Okay, for parts now. Dr. Reiser-Spiritu, two minutes, followed by Nancy Kent. Spiritu's out here. Okay, Nancy, you're on.
My name's Nancy Kent, I'm a resident of Glendale, also a homeowner, and I plan to vote no on Proposition Ninety. Everyone I've spoken to about the propositions immediately says they're going to vote no on Proposition Ninety. There isn't even any discussion about it like there is on some of the other propositions. And I am very much against the concept of government seizing private property by eminent domain and then turning it over to another private owner. And if that was all Prop Ninety included, to limit that, I would probably vote for it, but it's a trap, it includes limiting that process, but it also has the business about takings that, uh, Mayor Weaver and Councilmember Yusefian and others here have already given lots of examples on, and we just do not want to open up that Pandora's Box of, uh, lawsuits against the city. The fiscal impact, uh, seems like it would be a nightmare, so I highly, I thank the city for bringing up this subject to help educate the public about, uh, that this is a very bad proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there is a resolution at eight C one.
I thought we said we weren't gonna pass a resolution, so you can note and file.
Well, those were propositions, this, well, yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah.
I'd like to- I'd like to make a motion to note and file and hope that everybody reads this proposition.
Second.
Now, this is one that hits us directly, so I'll be voting opposite of that. This impacts the city of Glendale tremendously if it passes.
Discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
I also will not be voting for that. I think we need to take a strong stand. 48C1 opposing Prop 90, I don't think a note and file is, is what we need to do on this critical, critical proposition, which could affect us in many ways, as the speakers and Mr. Starbird has pointed out to us.
Okay, so there was a motion, a second?
There was a motion to note and file by Councilmember Yusefian and seconded by Councilmember Menucha.
Okay.
Question, by passing a resolution in, in support or in opposition to Proposition 90, what do we accomplish?
Sent a message, I guess, to the community.
We just sent the message.
Yeah, it's a way to formalize the council's support or opposition to a proposition to your residents.
Okay. I, I just think, I mean, personally, I, I am opposed to the proposition, but to be consistent with what we did earlier, I think we should just note and file. And in terms of sending a message, I think we've clearly send a, clearly send a clear message, so.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menucha.
To the motion of note and file, yes.
Najarian.
No.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
No. What is next, please?
At 8D is Director of Administrative Services Regarding Amendment to City GCA Memorandum of Understanding. E1 is Resolution Amending City GCA Memorandum of Understanding Amendment.
Okay. Need a report, or is there a motion at 8D1?
There is a motion, a resolution at 8D1.
I'll move 8D1. Second.
Discussion, Mr. Yusefian.
I have some issues with this. On some of the items, I don't have a problem. On some of the items, I do have some issues with. One of the items is number five, foreign language proficiency pay. This basically says, you walk in, you say you speak a certain language, you automatically get your $80 a month. And it just kind of eliminates the old standard, which was, you've got to pass some kind of a proficiency test that says, can you actually do this?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Yusefian, there is a certification process in addition to just walking through the door. It's handled through our department.
So how's this any different than what it was before?
What, what's different is that there will no longer be a wait period in order to, to be considered for the, the bilingual pay. Right now, we're doing all kinds of recruitment, outreach recruitment, where we're posting directly on the job bulletin that we're looking for people with bilingual skills. And, you know, the current language, the, in most cases, the newly hired employee would have to wait approximately one year, or in some cases, longer, just in order to be eligible for, for that bilingual pay. Because the specific language indicates that their annual performance evaluation must be rated at meet standards or above, if we're going out and recruiting for people, we certainly don't want to have them wait a year in order to be eligible for this.
So if someone is not performing on their duties, the old thought process was, if a person is not doing a good job in whatever they're doing, whether they're sweeping the streets, or they're a police officer, or whatever they are, they shouldn't be getting another $80 a month because they speak a different language?
Well, they can be...
I mean, what was the, what was the thought process behind that process that was in the MOU and previous MOUs before that? I mean, why did, why did people do that in the past?
It was, it was to ensure that there is some level of job performance before this is considered or granted to an employee. But this is not an automatic by any, any way, shape, or form. This has to be recommended by the management within that department. And there has to be a recognition that, you know, the, the language that's being proposed is something that's spoken in the community, and also that the employee's actually going to be using it in the course of their employment. If it's something that, you know, if it's French or something like that, it's not, not going to be put forward. But again...
Why not? What do you have against the French?
Well...
How about Italian? Maybe?
Yeah.
Mr. Starbird.
Yeah, I, I think what's suggested here is you, you separate the performance of the employee with their use of the language from the day one that they're hired. If it's a needed language, it's a high priority. If they're in a position, they need to use it and it benefits us, then frankly, it helps us recruit people. We can say, in addition to your basic pay, if you speak these languages, you can get an extra 80 bucks a month. Separating that from whether or not, at the end of their probationary period, they're doing their job. And if they're not doing their job, whether they speak a foreign language or not that we use, then we're going to deal with that issue in and of itself. And then that, that's the desire here, to separate the two so we can use as a recruitment tool.
And there is a test for this.
Right. So, yeah, people still have to show that they're proficient in language.
They have to prove themselves. It's not an automatic, and, and again, it has to be recommended by management.
Okay.
Do they have to read and write?
As it stands now, yes. They have to have some ability to read and write.
Okay, could you explain to me number six? The wellness program.
The wellness program is a fitness program that, it's actually been within the police department for, oh, about two years now. And up to this point, there weren't any monetary incentives provided. It was simply strong encouragement by management that sworn officers participate in the programs that they have available. They have a fitness coordinator who deals with issues of nutrition, diet, exercise, and really works closely with employees.
And we build a gym in the police station.
Yes.
For, for them and all of this others, and there's weight programs, and there's all kinds of stuff that they do over there. So my question is, why do we have to pay them $200 for, for having them take care of themselves?
It's merely an incentive to, to provide even further encouragement. Again, this is something that's been available to officers, and we're trying to extend it to the non-sworn employees as well within the, the department, simply as a means of improving their health. And, you know, in our view, it's a small price to pay.
But they should be improving their own health for their own sake. I mean, nobody wants to be sick. Does anybody want to be sick in this room? I don't think anybody wants to be sick. Nobody wants to be sick. Nobody wants to die young.
Mr. Starbird.
Nobody wants to do anything about it.
Yeah, exactly. And I will tell you, from, from years of being involved in workers' compensation programs, Mr. Yusefian's argument is a very good one, and that is, people ought to be concerned about things, these things, to take care of themselves. But Mr. Quintero was right on target, they don't. Many times, they don't. And these little incentives really help to get people motivated. And I will tell you, if you save one worker's compensation claim, it'll more than pay for, pay for this program in the police department. That's, that's what departments have found time after time after time. These little incentives can pay for themselves multiple times in a program like this.
Okay, and what's number seven?
I, I just want to add, and as someone who has a sore shoulder and an elbow, trying to take care of himself.
Do you get $200 a month to go out there and picture?
I need to see a doctor about my shoulder and elbow from working out.
Okay, continue along, number seven, or whatever.
Member of the council, number seven is a, is...
Is the continuous overtime.
Yeah, provision affecting GWP, electrical field.
So we're paying them time and a half, so you're talking about almost doing what we do in the, the movie industry when there is overtime and then there's golden time, which is, you get twice as much.
If someone is required to work over 12 hours continuously, and because there's a limit total of 18 hours, it's, it's that period of time between 12 and 18 hours, which is a long time to work. Fatigue does set in, but it's, it's something that does occur on occasion when we have these outages and windy nights.
And I understand all that. To me, I have a philosophical issue with that. If you are overworked and you're fatigued, you shouldn't be working because by you working, you are going to put those people into jeopardy of getting injured. On the first one, we're trying to give them exercise so they could take care of themselves. On the other one, we give them incentives to work more than their 12 hours, and we pay them more money.
That's correct.
And, and the thing that I don't understand is, the amount of fatigue is not going to go away just because they think that they're getting more money. They'll be happier about it, but they were doing this before for, for time and a half, so what changed all of a sudden that they need to have the golden time?
Actually, sir...
I was just going to say, we worked over 12 hours today, we're going into the fatigue mode now.
We ain't getting no golden time.
We ain't getting golden time.
We ain't getting golden time. We're getting old in time, but no golden time.
If I may ask a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Aren't there state laws that, that require a certain time, type of overtime after a certain number of hours? And in terms of the amount of hours that an employee can work during a day is limited as far as state laws concerned? Now, I don't remember the specifics, but I do know that after a certain hour, by state law, you're required to pay overtime. You're required to pay a double time, not just...
Um, no. Under state and federal law, there are overtime laws about, typically, they involve 40 hours, working in excess of 40 hours in a work week. The laws you're talking about, about double time after a certain number of hours, those are largely private sector, and except, usually, public sectors exempt from those laws.
From the state laws, state labor laws?
That's correct.
Oh, the public sector.
Correct.
But the private sector is not.
Correct.
And that's what I'm asking, what is the law for the private sector?
I, I couldn't address those with any...
But we might point out two things here. One is, we're trying to be competitive with, with our chief competitors, who are the investor-owned utilities. And this is consistent with what is happening in the industry.
Yes.
Industry-wide. And you recall, part of our biggest difficulty we've had in GWP is recruiting line people and keeping line people after they've been trained. This is a relatively small component of overtime. It's only that time when they have to work long enough, they've gone, they've exceeded 12, but they can't work more than 18. We won't let them work more than 18. So it's that six-hour period that they could possibly get an additional increase in their overtime for the six-hour period. In those rare occasions when the storm is so bad and there's so much work, we've got to work them more than 12, we don't work them more than 18. And it's consistent with what's happening in the industry, and again, helps us, relatively small issue, that, that helps us maintain our, our policy of, of keeping our people competitive with what's happening out there in the private sector, the major utilities.
That's correct. And often, there, once again, this, I view this as an incentive as well, because it isn't always easy to, to get employees to work overtime. I mean, we, we can require it, we can ask, but on some occasions, it's hard, especially employees who live further out and that sort of thing.
Mr. Mayor, I, I was going to vote against this originally. I'm glad that you answered some of my questions, so some of the issues was cleared. In a scheme of things, some of these items are small amounts, but I had some philosophical issues with it. The last one's going to cost the city only about $9,000. The wellness will cost about $7,300. And the one before, the proficiency, will be $8,000, and the other one is $5,400. So overall, when you all add it all up, it's not going to amount to a whole lot of money. It will add up to some amount of money, but I think I can justify it at this point to kind of go vote for this.
Actually, sir, the first four of these items are either cost-neutral or cost-savings.
Right. I didn't have a problem with those.
Okay.
You saw me ask the question, what after?
There's no...
If it doesn't cause anything, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, I forget now if we had a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion, and there was a second.
There is.
Further discussion, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Next, please.
At 8D is Director of Development Services Regarding Proposed Landscape Maintenance District for North San Fernando Road Corridor. At E1, Resolution Initiating Proceedings. E2 Resolution Adopting Engineer's Report. And E3 Resolution of Intent.
Mr. Garcia, when we get to this, can we do all three at one time, or we have to do them individually?
You can do them one, individually, but, or, I'm sorry, at the same time, but I, we do have a change to 81 when you get to it.
But you wanted to tell us the change now.
Just say that has to do with the SECO finding for the resolution. So you might want to take that one when you get to it. Take the one first and adopt E2.
Take one first, and then do the other two.
Correct.
E1 has...
Yeah.
Do you, do you need a report on this? This is to initiate a process.
No, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move, I'd like to move 8E1, 2, and 3.
No, no, no. 8E1 first.
8E1.
Okay, now, Mr. Garcia, and seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just with respect to 81, with respect to the SECO finding, we just wanted to add some language so it's clear what the, what the exemption's for, and it has to do with an exemption for establishment of charges. And I'll just read the language, and then if Mr. Yusefian can add that to his motion.
If I agree with it?
If you agree with it. Section 4, we would, we would suggest be added, and it states that the proposed landscape and lighting district is exempt from review under the California Environment Equality Act pursuant to SECO Guideline, Section 15273A4, in that the proposed district is the establishment of a charge by a public agency which the city council finds and determines is necessary for the purposes of obtaining funds for a capital project, comma, specifically landscape and lighting, necessary to maintain service within existing service areas.
I agree with that.
Okay. So moving seconded.
Yeah, that's your motion?
Yeah. So if we could have a roll call for 8E1.
Amended.
As amended.
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Now, for 2 and 3, is there a motion?
Move 7. 8E2.
And 3.
And 3.
Okay, move second for 2 and 3. Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Next, please.
8F is City Attorney, continued from 81506 and 101006 regarding Conditional Use Permit Case Number PCUP 2005-17, located at 2331 Ramsey Drive. At 8F1 is Motion Rescinding Counsel Motion of August 15, 2006, directing the city attorney to prepare findings in support of approving the conditional use permit and directing the preparation of subsequent environmental review based upon new information. At 8F2, motion rescinding counsel motion of August 15, 2006, directing the city attorney to prepare findings in support of approving the conditional use permit and directing the city attorney to prepare a motion denying the conditional use permit and findings in support of denial.
Mr. Menucha.
I have not participated in these hearings, and I will not be voting on this issue.
Well, that's why you folded up. You're out of here.
One, one more issue. I, I would like, and I hope it's not as a surprise, a lot of people are talking about a view ordinance and things regarding views.
I haven't given it to them.
I think it should be agendized and brought to the council and discussed it.
They're going to research it.
We can agendize it sometime in the future. Thank you.
City Attorney knows. Mr. Mayor. Okay, Mr. Yusefian.
Move 8F2.
Do you have new business?
Yes.
That's one denying. Okay, there's a motion on F2.
Rescind and second.
I'll second it, but, well, actually, yeah, whatever, I'll second it. I want to make clear, I am not for this home being built, so what is this?
Mr. Yusefian's motion is 8F2, which would be to rescind the prior motion and to direct our office to bring back a, a motion with findings to deny the CUP. That's what your motion was. Is that what you wanted?
Well, my understanding was, we have to rescind this. And then there was, the reason we're rescinding this, because there was an issue with the environmental.
That's number one.
That's number one.
Number one.
You have two alternative motions here. You have two alternative motions here. If the intent is to send it back for additional environmental review based on what you learned when we came back, you know, with the implications of the road and the trees, then that's the first action on the agenda, the first alternative.
But if you feel that you know enough, that even if you have the additional information...
I should just say, the second one is there just provided as an option, because under SEQUEL, you can deny it, because you, you know, you don't have to continue to do more SEQUEL if you don't want it, you can just deny it. But what you gave us direction to do was really to bring back motion eight, F1.
Yeah, number one.
And that's what we do, we just brought two, just in case.
This is why, if you want to think ahead for enough...
F1 was what we asked you to bring back, because we didn't have enough information. Then I'll take my motion back and go back to what we directed you to do, which is F1.
Second.
Okay.
Have them do a complete EIR.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Wintaro?
No.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Okay, now, let's see what we're going to do with this. No. Two-two, and he's not voting. So, what happens?
On this, this is motion... Yeah, which was for me to bring back findings.
To bring back findings in support of the construction.
Someone can move the second motion, though.
Oh, you guys did.
Someone can move the second motion to deny it.
Well, they can, but I'm saying, in the absence of there being an action, the previous action would stand. You could consider the second alternative.
Let me just...
I don't know if the...
Let's just see where we're at on this, Mr. Mayor. We realized that there were some problems with the oak trees if we were to put in the road with the curbs and gutters and all that, which the zoning administrator did not initially realize. So, after we heard from the engineer and Mr. McKinley and all that stuff, we realized that if any type of road has to go in there, we're going to have to do a more in-depth... Is it an EIR actually that would have to be done?
Yes.
An EIR, to come back with the findings for us, and then the discussion on the appropriateness of the house would proceed.
Okay.
So, that's where I'm at. I'm not saying I'm going to approve the house or not, but just to look at the environmental with those oak trees on that road.
Well, where I'm coming from on the other side, just looking at what was presented to us previously, the environmental document is almost conclusively going to show that oak trees are going to have to be removed to widen the street, and maybe killing others because of damage to the road structure. So, therefore, we would have to make an overriding, we'd have to make findings overriding to allow it to go, highly unlikely. So, why waste the time of going back and doing environmental document when the element conclusion will probably be a denial?
Because you're assuming that what the environmental document will say?
Yes, based on the facts that were presented to us.
Well...
That's my conclusion.
Mr. Weaver, in all due respect, I understand that you've done stuff at the core with the environmental. How many times you have seen a scenario that somebody comes in and tells you X, Y, Z is present, and I don't need to do an EIR? You already know what the facts are. Can I just get it or not? And the answer, I'm pretty sure you have said is, go hire yourself a consultant, do the EIR to see what it is, right?
You're mixing apples and oranges in this case. Okay, I'll rescind my vote and let staff go out and do the work and bring it back, and then we'll be right back here again, probably denying because of the, we'll have to make findings to override.
I don't think staff's going to do the work. They have to go hire a consultant to do the EIR.
Might be helpful to clarify how this would be processed. So, I think the burden rests on the applicant. Elaine, can you clarify what would happen?
Will they have to do it?
The burden would rest on the applicant. The only reason I sense from the discussion that the alternative motion would make the applicant reconsider the design to see if there was any way to minimize the impact on the road. If you send it back according to the first motion, what will happen? They'll maintain the existing design, which would still remain before you. They'll only look at it in the context of the road and the design with that house design. So, if you want them to really look at the site open-mindedly and see if there's any other alternative in the design of the house that might diminish it, it might encourage them to go that way with the denial.
Mr. Garcia?
The only thing I would add to that, though, is, once you're in the world of an EIR, the EIR must study alternatives. And so, really, even though the burden on the EIRs is with the applicant in terms of paying the cost, the choice of alternatives is within the city's discretion, what alternatives the EIR should look at. So, the EIR can look at some other alternatives, and those can be design alternatives to mitigate the impact to the oak trees and to the road.
I was just trying to figure, there's trees here, there's trees here. How many alternatives can you have to get through there?
They could actually move the driveway potentially, and that's something...
What does that have to do with getting through the oak trees that are down the hill?
The road has to be widened to reach the driveway.
It has to be widened.
And if the driveway is closer to the existing Cascadia, the extent of the driveway...
It has to be to city standards, curb, gutter, standard width.
I'm not making myself clear.
Underground utilities.
Mr. Mayor, can I have the...
I know what you're saying.
The thing is...
I'll give you the microphone.
The pointer's right there.
Let me try this.
I don't know where you're coming from with this.
Okay, let me try to explain this. And I don't know if this will work, and that's one of the problems I have. I don't think the applicant's going to work very hard at trying to make any other alternatives work, unless they think the design's in question. And that's why I'm being a little interesting on this. This road is the improved road. The unimproved portion is from here through to here. They show the driveway coming in here. If the driveway were somehow brought here, and maybe the garage is here, and the house is in a different location, maybe down here, in other words, they put the garage into the hillside that we talked about in the hillside matters, then all this portion here from that point all the way around here wouldn't have to be widened.
Okay, what about...
And so, it would diminish the impact, at least for that portion, or half the distance would be diminished.
Where are those oak trees?
The oak trees are basically...
On the map you just showed us.
Well, this is the same road, but you can see the oak trees kind of line it on both sides.
Yes.
And the parcels in question are these parcels here.
Yes.
So, if it was coming here, several of the oak trees wouldn't be affected.
But it would still affect...
It would affect some.
That are shown in that picture.
Absolutely. The ones at the beginning would still be affected.
Well, that's my point.
And at that point...
That's my point.
The question is, can the law be developed at all? But I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you're not enamored with the design, then you have the option of just denying it. If you want us to look at...
I'm not enamored with either one, but I'm talking about the environmental standpoint which has to come first. And I don't think you're going to come up with any design that's going to get a standard street through those oak trees. You're either going to kill the oak trees or remove them.
And I agree, and the city engineers here for the very reason to address that.
And you can come up with any alternative you want for zigzagging through there, but it's not going to get through.
But in the, in an EIR, which this would require, the preferred option would be an option that diminished the impact, and there would be a diminishment of impact if they would look at the design...
I doubt a city standard is going to allow an alternative developed that allows gravel or decomposed granite or anything other than an improved city street. And the city engineer's shaking his head at me, yes. So, where are the alternatives?
Well, the alternatives would be in the, not just the design of the road, but the design of the house and the garage.
Not under the first condition.
Well, that's why I said, but if there was some preference to look at the entire thing, that's the second motion.
I don't care. I'll do anything my colleagues want to do, but this is not a lie.
I'm looking at the entire thing, so whatever gets us there.
Well, that's A.F. 2.
I'm going to ask a question.
Yes.
If the project is denied, can the applicant, recognizing the conversation that's gone on for the past two meetings about design and oak trees, do they have any limitation on resubmitting this with a different design that they think would at that time address the concerns they've heard here at the council?
They could submit a new, basically submit a new application, trying to...
They'd have to start over.
Yeah, they'd have to start over.
At least they got to go back to the zoning administrator, and if it's appeared to go to VCA.
With the knowledge of what...
And just so you know, in order for the application to be processed, usually there's a six-month waiting period after a project's been denied, but there's an exception to that if the planning director finds there are changed circumstances.
And she found...
And if there were significant design changes, obviously, that would be a change of circumstance, and I have allowed people to come back in less than six months in that situation.
Okay.
Let me just, Mr. Mayor, if I can, raise one more point that you need to be aware of. I think when people left the last meeting at which you discussed this, they anticipated, because that was your direction to staff, to come back with an action to refer this back for further environmental review. I don't know if all the parties are here. I think a lot of people left anticipating the action that is option number one here. That doesn't mean you can't take option number two. I'm only pointing out that I think a lot of people left that meeting that were here that evening anticipating that you were going to then take option number one.
And I'll be glad to rescind, change my vote if that will make everybody happy.
Well, let me ask a question before I hold you to that.
I don't care.
In our previous meeting, one of the suggestions I threw out in an attempt to save those trees was for the city to vacate that street, or the applicant to purchase it from the city. In the EIR, let's say in EIR, we send it back for an EIR, can that be included as a mitigating factor?
That it is the street be vacated?
Straight be vacated, and any paving or improvement not be constructed to city standards, treat it as a private drive?
We could look at that as mitigation measure. We could also look at it as an alternative, potential alternative to having the project with access by a public street.
Mr. Wintaro?
If that's the case, how about the property owners upstream at what?
Outlook Lane only takes access off of the same street.
I was going to point out, it seems to me you're going to have to have all the property owners take access agreeing to that. Now, we heard a lot of concerns about a desire to maintain this is a dirt road. Who knows? There may be some property owners willing to allow it, but as a private street, the question becomes, would we allow additional housing to be built even on a private street with dirt road standards? I think your city engineer and your fire department will tell you no.
And where's our liability coming in?
That's not good practice.
Okay, so, do you want me to change?
I don't know. Do you want me to change?
I think it will be cleaner, I think it will be cleaner for us if we had some more evidentiary analysis done through an EIR consultant, just in case something happens. We have good documentations. It protects the city better. That's why I think we should just have them go, spend the money, if they want to spend the money. They may not decide, they may say, you know what, I don't want to spend another $50,000, $60,000 on EIR.
Okay, but they won't be, they won't be changing the design.
Fifty, sixty.
The design will stand as is.
It will probably have to, because the issue isn't over the house as much as there is about the road.
It will...
Not for me. Not for me. No, for me, it's the road, the oak trees, and the house. That's a two-story house on the top of a hill, or at least, you know, almost at the top of a hill, I shouldn't say at the top, but close to the top, and it, to me, a single-story, a more modern house that fit into that hillside, I'd be for that, but I'm not going for anything faintly resembling what they've done.
And please take into consideration...
Yeah, in the northwest, it'd be great.
The element of both, there's only four of us. So...
It's your pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
My pleasure? I want to go home. So, what do you want to do?
Well, after the EIR is done, I mean...
You want it, you want it, you two want EIR.
Yeah.
Want to let them do it at EIR?
In terms of due process, Mr. Garcia, do we, are we in a better position if we at least keep it, keep it afloat for them to attempt the EIR and come up with alternatives? Or...
Yeah, I mean, they've had their, yeah, they've had their hearing, and the council has it right now to deny the project. Everybody's been notified of the hearings and this meeting.
Well, we blew it. I mean, our zoning administrator made assumptions that brought them along, which were ultimately proven to be incorrect. So, I mean, in a sense, we've shepherded them along to where we were two weeks ago, and now we're saying, oh, wow, we're realizing that there are some issues, go back. So, I mean, in terms of the fairness to the applicant, I don't want them to say, you didn't give us the opportunity to...
Remedy the problem.
Remedy it.
And all they're going to do is remedy the environmental.
Pardon me?
If they start modifying the design, then they may be back square one, correct?
Well...
If they conclude they have to change the design of the house, then we would return it to the ZA for review.
So, we go through the environmental, in the meantime, they're going to have to leave the design the way it is and take the chances that the design will pass even if they overcome the environmental issue.
But at least they're still...
Yeah, I might just point out, though, but you let them make that decision. I mean, they can listen to everything in these meetings, and they can conclude why they want to walk down that road.
You have to handle every cable. He'd have to make a motion to reconsider, and then...
Who could make that motion? Because no side won.
What's that?
Don't you have to be in the prevailing side to make the motion reconsider?
You got a good point there.
The prevailing side is the side that...
The motion?
The voted no, because somebody moved it for eight, F1, Mr. Yusefian.